Hello, good evening. Selma High Leadership Students started out this semester by reflecting on the fall semester and setting personal goals for the rest of the school year. We also have been busy setting dates for all activities happening in the spring semester. To tackle planning our events, we have formed committees and participated in lessons on topics such as active listening and respectfully disagreeing to support our collaboration. Along with our committee planning workshops, we are getting ready to support our senior athletes by making posters and setting up photo op stations for winter sports senior nights. Additionally, we are excited to share that we have partnered with the site's special day classes and carved out time for students to come into the leadership room to work on social skills in a safe and supportive environment and build new friendships on campus. Last Friday was our first day of classroom visits and many students have shared that they had fun meeting new people and are looking forward to this week's visits. Bear Nation Athletics is heading into the second round of Tri County Conference. Lady Bears Basketball had two great wins last week defeating Hanford West and CVC and travel to Kingsburg tomorrow to play the Vikings. Boys Basketball is one of the division's top three teams. They are sixteen and four this season. And Selma High will host the Kingsburg game this Wednesday night. Boys and Girls Wrestling hosts a league try meet Tuesday versus Emmanuel and Reedley starting at 5:00 P.M. Boys and Girls Soccer are completing the first round of TCC play with girls playing at Hanford West on Tuesday and hosting Washington Union on Thursday. The Boys are playing Kerman on Wednesday and travel to Reedley on Friday. Spring Sports is getting started and we are excited that the weather is improving. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you so much. Next, we're moving on to charisma and Mariah.
Spelling Bee, congratulations to our spelling bee winners. I'm sorry for advance if I said your name wrong, but the first place winner was Kurtie Tohan. Andrew Nato, second place. Manpreet Kar, third place. And in eighth grade, Abram Arcos Rodriguez was in first place. Victoria Garcia was in second place and Lorenzo Moran was in third place. Moving on to Selma High next Monday at 6:00 P.M., Selma High is hosting the Moving On to Selma High event where all eighth grade students and parents have been invited to learn more about the elective pathways and extracurricular activities that Selma High School has to offer. Additionally, next Wednesday and Thursday and Friday during eighth grade lunch, various CTE programs from Selma High School will be on the ALMS campus to answer any questions students may have about their classes. Academic awards, Thursday, February 2nd and at 6:00 P.M. In the ALMS gym, we will be holding our first trimester academic awards. We will be honoring those students with perfect attendance, A and B honor roll and principals honor roll. Athletics, basketball, soccer, and wrestling are nearing the end of their season. You can come and cheer on our basketball and soccer teams next Monday and next Wednesday. Our next wrestling meet will be next Tuesday in the ALMS cafeteria. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations to all the spelling bee winners and even the ones that didn't win are still champions for even attempting to spell some of those words. Congratulations. Next on the agenda is Site Leader Reports. Before we go to Site Leader Reports, I wanted to read something out of our Governance Handbook. And it is, what is our purpose? "We are a leadership team responsible for the realization of the mission of our district while being fiscally responsible with the public monies in our trust. We consider the future as well as the present and maintain our focus on our mission, vision, and goals that were developed through the inclusive processes. We have the responsibility to do the best job we can for our students within the state and federal requirements, to consider the whole child and to provide necessary resources to families in crisis. We believe that all students can learn and want our students to graduate from our schools able to become responsible citizens. We provide a physically and emotionally safe, comfortable environment that encourages learning. We set high expectations for staff, expect staff to continue to learn and grow, and to believe that failure is not an option. We see that the necessary resources are available to our staff to do the work we expect of them and have an evaluation system in place that holds everybody, let's see, that holds everybody accountable, starting from the superintendent. We inspire, engage, and inform our staff and community about our education issues on behalf of our students, our district, our teachers, and public education." Moving forward, Site Leaders.
Mr. or Dr. Pickle? Mr. Dr. Pickle?
All that works. Thank you. What's going on at Selma High School? We have a big game we invite you to this Wednesday, of course. It's gonna be a good night and moving on from that, Adam already spoke about that. We have current registration going on for our ninth through eleventh grade. Our goal by this Friday is to be about ninety percent complete so we can begin the master schedule process. Of course, we all know that drives everything we do. But about ninety percent of those in the system. And then we're gonna chase down that other ten percent. Those are students that have missed their registration day. But once we get those in, then we're gonna focus on our incoming freshmen. I'm sure Mr. Lane's gonna be up to talk about moving on a little bit, so I won't steal his thunder, but that's January 30th. And right after that is a CTE showcase, which she'll touch on, but more importantly, we have our ALMS registration days, February 6th and 7th. So, right after February 6th and 7th, we should be able to look at our numbers and begin to ferret out exactly what our needs are at Selma High School. And then we will operate our own CTE showcase on February 10th on campus, which is gonna highlight internally our CTE programs for our students. This will be the first time we've done that for our current students to be able to choose and to understand what type of CTE pathways that they have available to them. And then looking way forward, I want to invite you to our open house on March 9th at 6:00 P.M. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lane?
Good evening. A couple of things going on at ALMS I wanted to highlight. Ever since we got back from winter break, our attendance has really skyrocketed. The last week prior to winter break, really the last eight to ten days, we'd hit a little bit of a plummet and I checked with other principals in the district, seemed pretty similar to what they were experiencing, but we're up over ninety-five percent average since we've returned. This past Friday was our highest attended Friday of the year so far, so I was really happy to see that. Not only does the enrollment continue to grow, but the percentage of students that are there continues to grow. And so that's something that we want to keep going. That's great momentum that we're seeing. Then moving on to Selma High, one week from tonight, we've been in collaboration with the high school. One of our missions is to really have the high school and middle school really join forces and make this as seamless as possible. So thanks to VROP and Fabrizio and Dre have helped us brainstorm and ideas to entice our eighth graders to get there. And they came up with some food trucks and our eighth grade students get a ticket. And with that ticket, they get a free meal at the food truck to attend that evening. We're hoping that that drives up attendance as well. And then subsequent to that, on the Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we have CTE week where every CTE program will be highlighted at lunch. We'll do half on Wednesday and half on Thursday. For our seventh graders as well, they won't be quite there yet and especially for our eighth graders. And then Friday will be the Ag Olympics, which is a pretty big event on campus. It's the first time, as far as I've been told, that the CTE programs have been highlighted in totality there at ALMS so students get a really good idea of all that's offered at the high school and everything that they are welcome to join. And then lastly, in the next two weeks, we'll be starting after school program, once again with a CTE flavor. We'll have robotics and then we'll be doing patient care slash health science and criminology slash CSI coming over from the high school. It'll be one day a week, kind of a nice intro for our students every Wednesday, and we're gonna run that for two months. So that's, any questions or? Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not to put anybody on the spot, but is David Deal here?
Yes, he is.
Can you give us a little update? Not to put you on the spot.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Did you need a report from me?
I just need to know, just give us a little what's going on.
Sure.
We're excited.
Well, A2A has rolled out. That's exciting. And I'm gonna say that, you know, with Mr. Lane's improvement in attendance, we're gonna take a little bit of credit for that and that the letters, six thousand letters went out to families. I think it was, it started some really good conversations in terms of attendance and turned what might have been positive conversations. So that was wonderful. Everybody's extremely A2A part, we're gonna start, we circled back A2A so that they're for front office staff as they're learning the system and we can improve that. And then also work with our site admin on developing the frameworks around those systems and how A2A can benefit them as well. So that's the report from.
Thank you so much. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I'm just really excited and just wanted to hear a little bit about what's going on.
Yeah, no, good things.
Thank you. Do you have any question? Thank you. Oh, Estella? When did you roll it out?
So, well, technically it rolled out a couple of weeks ago, but the letters went out last week and went into our second batch. They come out once a week. So because it was a mid-year, it two for letters from the first semester. This seventy or eighty there. Any, which means that every family's that to do one is getting one. And it allows us to start looking at our data around our chronically absent students and then implement our interventions more effectively.
Okay. Any issues with getting them out?
Pardon me?
Any issues with getting them out because that's a large amount?
No, well, that's the great thing about A2A is they mail them for us automatically.
Oh, okay.
So that's taken that responsibility off the site. And that's part of their service for us is they extract the information out of our ARES student information system based on the data that's in there and they queue up the letters. They're already printed. They're already pre-signed by the individual principal and then we get to review them. And once we say A-okay, or we don't respond at all, we don't say anything, they just send.
There's not too much for the site to do?
Not in that regard. I mean, the critical thing around for the sites, and that's what frees them up is student did miss, reconcile the absences. Barrier if that's the critical part of improving our attendance is identifying the barrier and then removing.
And we'll be looking forward to updates. Right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Moving forward.
Just a minute, I think. Do I have an elementary principal ready? Yes. Okay, Mrs. Fuentes was scheduled to talk about Indianola, so thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Members, Dr. Shepherd, and the Executive Committee. Thank you for allowing me to present to you tonight to provide an update for Indianola. We are continuing to focus on our success pillars, academics, behavior, social, emotional learning, and attendance. We recently participated in the Selma spelling bee. When we took first place for our fourth grade, Isaac Cortez Garabee. And fifth grade took second place, Amelia Munoz. We are very proud of our Indianola warriors. We are working very hard to build relationships with students and families to address issues before they interfere with academics. Most recently, we hosted a donut with dear ones, which is an event that allows students to spend quality time with a dear loved one. They shared a donut, milk, coffee, and this was all done before school. And we had nearly, we had close to five hundred participants that our whole entire cafeteria, thank you, was completely full. So that was definitely a success and parents asked for more additional events such as that so that they can just bond and have that quality one-on-one time. So that was really a success. Our winter program was also a success. We had about five hundred people in attendance there, filled up the cafeteria. We are continuing with our attendance rewards. We have Crazy Karen who provides a fun and energetic assemblies on a monthly basis so that to help students work towards their goal of ninety-seven percent attendance. One of our Indianola strengths is our staff. Our caring and dedicated team goes the extra mile for our students. They support each student to feel very positive and help students work through their daily struggles that they may be occurring in their lives. After our morning morning announcement with the positivity project, staff promotes and encourages positive mental health by teaching students to self-identify their current feelings and then teach them how to cope and teach them those coping skills so that they can push through it and learn how to deal with life's events. This empowers students to be resilient and push through life's struggles. We promote a positive message of inclusion and kindness on our campus. In addition to providing social and emotional support, our teachers are doing a phenomenal job with our math mastery. Our teachers and students are working hard and they are doing a great job because our scores are improving. And I attribute this all to our dedicated staff and they're doing a great job. And that's it. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
When you were talking about teaching them coping skills, give me a couple of examples of coping skills.
Um, we have students, for example, if they are feeling lonely, like they don't have any friends. We work really hard with the leadership students to reach out and to make friends. Help them, teach them those skills on maybe if they're too shy, to teach them, as I mentioned, leadership to befriend them and show them how to engage with other students. Our PBIS person on our campus, she's awesome. And she works with them on how to make a friend, just that communication on what to do, what to say, to get them out of their comfort zone, but actually to give them a skill in learning, learning, learning how to make friends because it's difficult. And I would say another one is students that are having trouble with, for example, keeping their hands to themselves. You know, maybe rough playing, things like that. We teach them other ways of showing their excitement or the proper way to, you know, maybe hug a friend or hug a buddy or things like that, but not in the way of pushing or hitting those type of things. So those are just a couple of examples of teaching them skills how to push through that.
Oh, that's great. Does any, thank you for sharing that. I was, does anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have anyone else?
No, I don't think so. I don't believe so. Oh, did I have someone else? Raquel? Well, Rosa's that first for the adult school, so, okay. All right, I think we're good.
Okay, so we'll move on to number eight, public input. Members of the public wishing to address the Board of Education on matters within the jurisdiction of the board, but not on the agenda, may do so during the public comment period for up to three minutes. Public comments on specific agenda items are heard under that item. For the public record, please state your name. And we're moving on to nine, discussion action items, Superintendent.
Okay, I don't believe we have any cards, right? No, okay. All right, so the first one is adopt a resolution. The celebration of Black History Month in February 2023. Do you have someone that'd like to read the resolution?
Would you like to read it, Mark?
Here, I have a hard copy.
It'd be easier to read a hard copy. I'm the same way. I'm old school. Same way.
Thank you for not picking one of them.
Oh, I should have picked you.
No.
Your net. Thank you, Mark.
The radio voice?
Sal Unified School District Board of Trustees' Proclamation. Proclaiming that the celebration of Black History Month in February 2023. Whereas African-American/Black History Month is an annual observance to recognize the significant roles African-Americans have contributed in our nation's and community's history, the contributions to arts, entertainment, law, politics, sciences, sports, and more. And whereas, the history of the African-American Black History Month tracks back to 1915 when the father of Black History Month, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, introduced the first Negro History Week in February 1926. Whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Black history to the American experience and include some of the greatest, most advanced and innovative societies in our history from which we can draw inspiration. And whereas, due to determination, hard work, and perseverance, African-Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions in Selma, Fresno County, the state of California, and the United States, achieving notable success throughout the society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas, Selma Unified School District and the Selma community are strengthened and enriched by the diversity of cultures and traditions that are a cornerstone of our region and our rich, diverse social tapestry. And whereas, all students need the opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own cultural identity and heritage, and to respect and accept the identity and heritage of others. And now therefore, the Selma Unified School District Board of Education does hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 as National Black History Month. Staff, students, parents, and the community are encouraged to observe, recognize, and celebrate the culture, heritage, and contributions of Black Americans to our country, our state, our cities, and our schools.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to to adopt a proclamation? Estella, Estella?
I'll second.
And Mark, second. Motion has been passed to adopt proclamation proclaiming the, oh, all in favor? Opposed? Motion has passed to adopt a proclamation proclaiming the celebration of Black History Month in February 2023. Thank you. Moving forward, Dr. Shepherd, Adult School Presentation.
So I'd like to invite our adult school team led by Mrs. Rosa Molly, the new principal. Well, she's, she's new there, but anyway, so welcome and I'll let you take it from here. They've done, oh, here's some copies.
Just wanna make sure. Okay, so, thank you for this, Executive Board and Board Members. It is my pleasure to talk a little bit about our adult program and what's going on there. I'd like to preface, this is my sixth week on the physician, so I am learning as we go along and it's been a phenomenal experience to get to work with the adult staff, the work, the staff that's there, as well as our adult learners. So with that, I'd like to go to the first slide, just to share a little bit about the beginning of this school year. So our adult program, now all our classes are being held at the Washington campus. So this campus now serves as a central location for our community as well as provides easier access for our students and is an optimal location for the clientele that we serve. Also, our staff has had the opportunity to get to know each other because in, before coming over to Washington, we had classes offered at Selma High. We had Eric White and we had Hartman. So this now unites all the staff members to get to know each other and know who is working for this program. And to talk a little bit about our staff, our staff includes myself, the principal. Facilitator is Mrs. Desiree McDougall. She's sitting right over here. And we also have eight, six, six adult independent study program instructors. We have seven ESL instructors. We have day and evening custodians. We have an administrative assistant, an office assistant, a data accountability specialist, and a bilingual instructional aide. So quite a bit of staff there. And going on to the next slide. So what are the programs that are offered in the Selma adult school? So to start off, we have the Adult Independent Study Program known as AISP. And this supports our adults in our community to earn a high school diploma. And we currently have eighty-eight students enrolled, which is the maximum amount of faces that we have with the instructors. We have six teachers and each has either, they either have full days, evening time, or a combination of both. And we just completed our spring enrollment for, that we just had it the week of January 9th through the 12th. So that has already taken place and today was actually our first day. Our ESL classes, we offer them both in the morning and in the evening. We have six different levels from free-lit all the way to advanced. And our placement levels are based on the GASSAS test, which is the comprehensive adult school assessment system. So that is taken twice, twice a year. So that lets us know in what level our students are placed. Seven classes that we have, and that's a combination, as I said, AM and PM. And our spring registration was just held last week. So that went very well and quite busy. We also offer civic slash conversation class and twice, twice a week. And basically, these are activities that integrate civics education and our ESL instruction. So we have objectives, we have language and literacy objectives, civics objectives, and they also have the COAP test that they take. And this helps us with funding from the state. And the next program is, our next slide is our Intro to Computers. And this is offered once a week on Tuesdays. And that's based on enrollment. And so far, we have a nice enrollment of about seventeen students for the spring. So we had a class in the fall and again offered this spring. And this class is to help our students increase their skills and open up new opportunities for them. We also have Reedley College on our campus and they offer non-credit courses. And our team of Reedley College, they have joined us to help with the registration and provide information to any of the adult learners that are interested. For the fall, our classes included today's receptionist, data entry with QuickBooks. So that was the fall. And for the spring, we're offering Microsoft Word, Word Processing Projects, and Beginning Keyboarding. So those are Reedley College courses. We also have the Adult Transitions Program and that's known as ATP. And we have one teacher, Mrs. Ruby Alvarado, and she'll be speaking a little bit about that in a few slides, a few of the upcoming slides. We have two program aides, Rosie Saldate and Connie Hernandez. And we will also be having a county ATP class that's gonna start after spring break. So that is on its way. And we also have our Valley Regional Occupational Program known as VROP. And we also have our vag- our, uh, Valley Regional Occupational Program known as VROP. And, uh, Fabrizio, our, uh, Superintendent for Valley ROP, he'll be talking a little bit about the cl- uh, the classes that are offered there. And so on the next slide, I wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, something new that, uh, we have put in place is, uh, we have Mary Lopez, she's from the, uh, the State Consortium. And she is our transition specialist. And what some of the things that she does, uh, is we have an orientation meeting, and then the students take a test, and then we assign them to an instructor. So orientations are held every Thursday at ten o'clock for students registering for the, uh, Independent Study Program. The evening orientations are offered, uh, will be offered every other Thursday, and we'll start this week with that, and that's at five thirty. Uh, and, and really, the purpose is for Mary to get to create a rapport with the students that she'll be servicing. Uh, she shares wonderful resources that are available from Community College, VROP, the workforce. And she also provides assistance with college and financial aid applications. So just a gem for, for us and our students in, in what she has to offer. And each, each, uh, semester, she meets with the students once a semester, and it's just to talk to them about, you know, their goals and how it's going, and any, any help that they need with anything that, uh, they're, they're pursuing. Um, so that, that's gonna, that's going well with that. Uh, she's also going to assist with, uh, what we call Reg to Go, which is Registration to Go. And that's an event for those students that are in the Adult Independent Study Program that will be, uh, graduating. And so that's going to be held April twenty-seventh, uh, this year. We also will have, uh, well, uh, Reedley College and Proteus. Uh, you, you know what? I apologize, I, I see that I skipped, and so let me finish this, the Reg to Go. Uh, and this will be a one-stop shop for, for our classes. So going back up to the one point that I missed, the Resource Fair for Selma students in our community will be held April twentieth. And this is going to be an event, uh, where we have colleges, businesses, the Selma Police Department, the Fire Department, and Proteus, they'll all be there to share what opportunities they have here in our community. So this will allow our students to be able to, uh, meet all these different organizations and possibly see what's, what's available for them. So that's going to be the Resource Fair that's held April twentieth. The Reg to Go is April twenty-seven. Um, also listed is the College Tour, uh, there is a College Tour taking place on May ninth. And this is open to our students in the adult, uh, program. They will have the opportunity to tour a campus. And, uh, the event will be held a ten-to-one, and lunch is provided. It's always nice to have a meal in there, because it's a motivator. Um, in addition to, uh, another event or another, uh, support, we will have a resume workshop, and that's scheduled on March, uh, sixteenth. And this is an evening event for students interested in creating a resume. So the students that, uh, leave, uh, who come to the, uh, to the support area for their, um, resume, uh, they'll be, they'll get a, they'll walk out with a resume. So that is, uh, another support for our students. And, uh, we also just will start on February third, it's our first distribution, it's our district food bank. Um, and like I said, that's, we're just starting that. So the next slide will show a little bit about the Central Food Bank. There we go. So, uh, first and foremost, I want to, uh, acknowledge the team that has helped support this and get this going off the ground. So we have Dr. Wildman, who's, who is, uh, worked with us. We have Alicia Gonzalez, uh, Desiree McDougall, Ruby Alvarado. We have, uh, Eduardo Alvarez from Selma High, Kristi Rankel, and the Key Club, as well as myself. Um, so this is a collaborative effort between, uh, the Central California Food Bank and Selma Unified. Uh, there is no cost to Selma Unified, as this is a grant that is funded, uh, through the Central California Food Bank. Uh, we will serve, we hope to serve. Our goal is, uh, to serve two hundred families, uh, in our community per month. And our financial allotment, this is what we had fun with. Uh, and when we were placing our first order, uh, we have a minimum of four thousand eight hundred. And we, and the max is five thousand, and that's per month. So we just received the training where we sat down and, and had the opportunity to uh, look at how we are going to place orders, and so we go through a shopping list. And there's various things that are on that list, and it, and it changes, uh, month to month. And some items are free. And so we definitely wanted to bank on, on those items that, that were free. So then, uh, we place the order, and then we receive the order the following week. So as a matter of fact, tomorrow, uh, will be our first order delivery. Um, and we will, we will have these funds, uh, through June of twenty twenty-three. And again, that's, we're looking at Central Food Bank again, uh, getting another grant for, uh, the next school year. Um, we will have the graphic design class from the Sel- from Selma High. They're going to be helping by designing the recyclable bags. Uh, we also have students from our Adult Transition Program that's on campus. They're going to be supporting, uh, by keeping track of the inventory and filling orders. So they're going to be a, a great force in, in this, uh, this, uh, this, this sec- this event that we're going to be doing monthly. Um, we also have, um, the Aviden Key Club students who will be helping with the distribution. Uh, and at the same time, we'll also count, uh, the, they'll count these hours as voluntary hours. Uh, we will have a referral process. Uh, this first time, we did not have a referral process, we just went through and selected things that, uh, we felt, uh, were needed and would, uh, would definitely help families. Uh, but in act- the actual referral process that will pull in, will start, is going to begin with our adult ESL classes, and that's just to get an idea of really, what is it that, uh, our adults in our community, uh, see as, as a need? And then, uh, this will help us, um, familiarize ourselves with this process. And then we will also then move to our migrant program, as well as our school site. So we'll have our social workers, uh, help with this process. So next slide. So just some, some basic additional information. Uh, for the fall, uh, we had an average of twenty-seven students per class for our ESL. Uh, the civic, civics conversation classes averaged about twenty-one students per class. Our computer class that's held on Tuesdays, we averaged about sixteen students. And our Built Independent Study, uh, Program, uh, they were able to, uh, get through a hundred and four students. Uh, and those were, uh, students that will have students finish the program, and then we bring in new students that are on the waitlist. And for, uh, the fall, uh, we have twenty-seven graduates. And then, of course, we'll have more coming in the spring. Uh, so that number will increase. And then the funding for the Adult Education Program Services, it's provided through state funding, and this is the California Adult Education Program. And that is through, uh, through the classes that we offer and assessments that they take. All that is, uh, is worth points, and those points then, uh, convert into money, funding. And we have federal funding, which is, uh, the WHOA. And this is going in and out, and the WHOA is the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, uh, and the Adult Education Family Literacy Act. And so, uh, we just completed, and this was due, uh, December fifteenth, I believe, the, uh, WHOA grant for the next four years. The grant that we're currently on was, uh, is good for three years. This is the last year of that grant. And so the, uh, the Notice of Intent to Award is going to be posted on February fifteenth, right after, uh, Valentine's Day. So we are greatly anticipating, uh, the news on that. Um, and so with that, are there any questions?
I have a questions, um, on that, uh, Resources Fair. Um, I know there's some agencies that you guys could have, invite them, High Speed Rail. They have a big office here in Selma. And also, I was thinking on Sheriff Department Fresno counties. They hires all the times, and well, as the city of Selma, Chamber of Commerce. And maybe if you guys could add on there, and maybe they could let the local businesses know.
Most definitely, I will follow up with Mary, our transition specialist who's helping organize that. And I'll definitely share that with her, thank you, Mr. Sahoda.
Thank you.
Yes.
So you're saying that we're, we are just getting done with one four-year grant? And so we're anticipating that?
Yeah, yeah, we ju- this is the last year of the, of the, of a three-year grant, uh, that was written. So yeah, we're finishing up that grant, and the grant that was just written is now, would be a four-year grant.
Okay, alright, just want to make sure.
Yes, so and then that, yeah, the new grant, we'll find out on February fifteenth.
So it's not solidified that we have it, what's still technically in the air?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, but the good thing is, we met the first criteria, which is all this information on enrollment and what was offered. So that was number one, to even have the opportunity to work on the application. So that's a good sign, you know, we had, we met that. And, uh, all the questions, there was various questions. And of course, I, I relied heavily on, I'd say, uh, Desiree, who's been in the program for several, several years. Uh, our adult, our secretary there that has ran, helped run the program for many years. So a lot of the information that was put in. Okay, goes in and out, um, I relied on, on their support, uh, to get all that valuable information in.
So any contingency, in case we don't get it?
Uh, you know what?
Or does it look like we're pretty much?
It's pretty routine.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not something competitive.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, good to know.
No, it's pretty routine, as long as you fill in all the bu- boxes.
And they got all filled in.
I know, first time she wrote it, and she labored over it and did a phenomenal job, so we're, we're good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for all the information.
Absolutely, and so with that, I do want, uh, our Selma Adult, uh, uh, transition, our ATP program to come up and share a little bit, there's two slides there. Uh, it's going to be the next slide, the Selma Adult, we go. And then after her, then we're going to have Mr. Fabrizio, he's going to present, uh, on the VROP. And he brought two students along with them to share, uh, their experience. Okay, thank you.
So I want to, the previous board, um, we opened the Adult Transition Program here in Selma. Uh, last year was the first year, uh, because our, the county Adult School Transition Program did not have enough slots for our kids. Plus, I'm a real believer that your students should be, stay in their community versus being sent to an, um, surrounding community, because they have to learn to live within their own communities. So, uh, there was twofold to keep our kids here. We have invited, the adult, the Fresno County Office of Ed asked if there was space for a program for theirs. So they are joining us on the campus, but our focus is, um, our kids and, and keeping them here. So it helps, um, we get asked a lot to house programs for the county because of our location to the freeway. And we're kind of central for some of the surrounding areas, so. Anyway, so Ruby was our first teacher who took this on and, uh, uh, has kind of fledgingly started this, and I think this year is much better than the first year, right? So I just want to acknowledge her work and her staff, the pe- folks that with, her whole team have done a phenomenal job engaging our kids. So we're glad you're here tonight, Ruby.
Okay. Can you guys, is that working? Yeah, okay, wonderful. All right, good evening for President Alanyes, Board members, Dr. Shepherd, Executive Cabinet. So it's our pleasure tonight just to give you a little overview of the Adult Transition Program, which is located at Washington. Um, as Dr. Shepherd said, it's really expanded this year. The very generous board, along with the Executive Cabinet, did approve a ban for our students to be transported to work sites, and that's really opened up so many opportunities for our students. Um, last year, it's, it's really hard to go to work sites because they go to multiple work sites. And, uh, Ms. Alvarado will share with you in just a moment where they go. Um, but it's been great for them to independently be able to go to work sites and get really wonderful job skills. So the Adult Transition, Transition Program is basically a program for our eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old special education students that did not get a high school diploma, they got a certificate of completion. And really, the goal of the program is to make our students independent as possible. So after they leave us at twenty-two, even though they got a certificate of completion, they want to, uh, work there. You know, we work on resumes with them, we work on interviewing skills, job skills, um, po- potentially connecting with Reedley College, taking some DSPS classes there. So we really, really want to work on their independence and just everything for their life after they leave us. So it's a really busy four years that they have with us, because again, we want to just make them as independent as possible. And so we do a lot of community ba- community-based instruction. Uh, you will rarely go by Washington and find, uh, Ms. Alvarado and her students in the classroom because they are out at job sites, which is really exciting. So they might be at the thrift store, um, scanning things, uh, making prices for things, hanging stuff up. They go to the pool store, uh, they do all sorts of really, really awesome things like that. Um, and it's really, really fun to watch them. If you ever want to see our students at work at a job site, um, let, just let us know, and we can set that up for you. Um, they have been really involved with the, um, trans- to, uh, Families in Transition Program, especially with the Food Bank and handing out food. Dr. Wildman had mentioned to me that the program was going to be there, and I said, oh, that's wonderful, please put our students to work. So that's kind of wonderful experience for them as well. And then, and again, just, we really want to just give them an age-appropriate spot to really learn, again, all those independent living skills, social skills. All the skills they're going to be using for the rest of their life, um, budgeting skills, a lot of real-world skills, and we want them to leave us at twenty-two wanting more. We don't want them to just want to sit at home, we want them to leave with really valuable skills that they've learned in those four years that they've been with us. So, uh, with that, Ms. Alvarado is going to specifically go into exactly what sites they're at and kind of what, what they do during the school day.
Good evening.
Excuse me, excuse me for a second, before you start. I cannot concentrate because I'm freezing to death, is the heater on?
The doors are open up there.
Am I the only one that's cold? You're cold. I'm gonna bring my own heater.
Good evening, my name is Ruby Alvarado, this is my second year as the Adult Transition Program teacher. Um, ATP is currently collaborating with Selma Unified School District and Central California Food Bank to provide food and personal necessities that individuals may need in our community. Students will keep track of inventory and organize the deliveries from the food bank. Students will be learning life skills throughout the process on keeping track of inventory, packaging, budgeting, and also organization skills. So today was actually our first day, we stocked up, um, our shelves with necessities that students may need, um, in our school district or families. Um, tomorrow, we'll get our first delivery, uh, from the food bank. So we're excited to get that at noon and stock the shelves, and we already have a student that will keep track of inventory, uh, organization skills, and then we'll be practicing packaging as well as, uh, keeping track of expiration dates. Um, ATP students work at sites throughout the week, uh, such as Second Chance Animal Shelter, Lala's Thrift Store, Carrie's Fashion, Valley Life Community Church. Um, we also, this year, we went to the Fresno Fair for the educational program. So I had about five students volunteer, uh, all those four days they were scheduled, and they saw thousands of students, and they were assigned different exhibits. So it's a great experience for our students, they were up at, um, I picked them up such as early as six-thirty, and they were ready with their uniform, with their badge, um, ready to go to work. So it was an amazing experience too, and they were dedicated, it was five hours, they were dedicated, they, they loved talking to the children. Um, their favorite one was the Ag exhibit, so they really enjoyed that this year. Students have volunteered at Captain Kingsburg, we go there every Friday. Um, also Clear Image Pool in Selma, as well as Selma Senior Center. The ATP program is always adding work sites and making community connections based on students' career interest. Um, a program we have is the Pathful Explorer. It is used in a classroom setting to, um, have ATP students do virtual job shadowing for the different careers, so they're really, uh, interested, they learned different careers. So they're really uh, interested. They learned different careers that there is. And every day you ask them, okay, what are you interested in? And then they choose the video. So it's really nice to see it virtually and job shadow those careers. Um, some stuff that we provide is vocational skills, which is uh, job readiness, community-based work experience, and job seeking. Another um, area that we support on independent living skills, they love cooking in the classroom. We have made lasagna, um, chicken alfredo, chilaquiles. So we have really enjoyed doing cooking and meal planning. Uh, we also do shopping. You will see us at Walmart many times. Um, budgeting for the week. Um, so we also uh, will be receiving a washer and dryer to practice laundry and household cleaning, as well as personal care, health, and hygiene. Thank you.
Yes.
And I, I just wanted to add one more thing. So we actually get a grant every year from the CDE. Um, right around fifty thousand dollars. And so that grant actually goes to pay our students minimum wage while they actually work at these job sites. And so we've, um, Salma Unified has had the grant for at least the last ten years. And so once these students go out, they actually do get paid through that grant for their work at work sites.
Thank you.
That's awesome. It's just really exciting to hear all that going on. And that, that's all love of the Washington site, right?
Yes.
See, what a, just a big difference. Thank you, ladies. We super appreciate that. Anybody have any questions?
So we have more. So just let you know, come on up, Fabrizio. Um, when I first started teaching, I taught the Adult School Transition Program with Fresno County Office of Ed. So well, our kids only got fifty cents an hour, but anyway. So we have been doing some refurbishment of the site. The next two slides, I mentioned last time, I think we flipped them up, gentlemen?
Yes, it's there.
Yeah, so um, we, we, there was carryover from the Adult School Program funds. And we, and they allowed us to keep it. So we're using those funds to refurbish. This is what it looked like before. And then the next rooms will show what they're turning out right now. So we're really excited about that. Each of the adult school classes will have a washer, dryer as well because the students will be learning that. So that's being installed. And uh, the goal is the entire site interior early will be redone uh, within the year. So we're excited about. So I invited Fabrizio to be here tonight because CTE has got an amazing connection with us. And um, with them all on the same site, it's been exciting. And one, one, one of the programs, Mr. Sahoda was particularly uh, excited to have started in our district and our community. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Uh, the Superintendent of Maharo here for this section. So thank you for being here.
Dr. Shepherd, thank you. Um, Madam President Alani, uh, members of the board, members of cabinet. And uh, Mrs. Sahoda is now our Board President for Valley ROP. So uh, Mr. Fodor is uh, the alternate. So thank you for being there. And um, quickly I'll go through. I just wanted to uh, let you know. Uh, one of the ways that we do career tech ad, and this is a really a partnership, we've been in a partnership with Salma Unified for fifty-two years now. Um, in a JPA agreement. When we set up a CTE courses, we have to look at labor market indicators. We have to look at where are the jobs? We can't just create classes because we like to. And uh, one of the things we use is uh, again, the labor market for the central mother load region, which is Stockton through Bakersfield. And then we look at also what employers are telling us. Because that's very important through our area, what they need. Um, and um, for adult test specifically, but also for our high school programs, for adult test specifically, we need to make sure that the courses give industry certifications. I always say, we can't set up circus tents without a circus inside. Okay, so we need to make sure that we have things that students get certified and they can move on. Short-term CTE courses where students get trained within between five weeks and eighteen weeks or within a semester. And they can advance either to post-secondary to a job. Um, so these are the courses that we offer here with some adults. These are Emergency Medical Technician, Wildland Firefighting, Certified Nursing Assistant, CNA, um, Fire and Emergency Dispatch, with a Heavy Equipment Operator, a Security Guard Card with a Baton Training. And then we are also adding the um, Instructional Aid with a Par Professional. So these are all courses where students can come in, get an industry certification between five, ten, or eighteen weeks, get into a job. I'm just gonna go through real quick. And I brought a couple of students because I really want you to hear from the students, what the uh, what their expenses and whether or no. Um, I have Alexis Morphine and uh, I have Jocelyn Guzman. And I just want to come, come on up. And I just want you guys to uh, share. Uh, for the EMT, um, Alexis went through the EMT class here in Salma, and she can share real quick what she, where she's at and where she's done.
Hi, everybody. I'm Alexis Morphine, and I joined the EMT course, I believe. Um, time has gone so fast. I can't even remember if it was September, October. And um, between those months until the end of December, uh, we've met every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday night from six to ten PM. And, and we learned how to be an EMT. I was able to get certified in um, first aid and safety. And I am also registered to take my national exam now, um, in March. So we, uh, with that course, we were able to apply to take the National Registry to actually be EMTs. Um, which sounds funny because of course you would think, oh, EMT. But there's a lot of uh, different classes and maybe misinformation out there on how, how to get a career or to get a career in this, or maybe a private school. And that costs a lot of money. But what I liked about Valley ROP is that they're very informative about the course to outline what we're going to be doing. Um, signing us up for our class, making sure that we are um, signing up for a career and to get a career in this field. Uh, I am actually a Salma High graduate. And so it is very nice to not drive that far. I still live in Salma. So I got to only drive five minutes to get to school every night. And so I also wanted to give a big thank you to my instructors, uh, Mr. Mark Zamora and Mr. Donovan Fuller, Fuller. Um, they stayed there with us, um, I mean, until ten o'clock every single night. And they had their own families and own careers. Uh, Mr. Fuller is actually the Chief of the Fire Department. And he would, after a full day's of work, and was a kid at home, would still come uh, to be with us. I think this just shows that the people that are in this program, they're really passionate on helping us out, making sure that uh, we're able to find a career. So uh, it's been a pleasure to be a part of the program.
And next is Jocelyn Guzman, who actually took also the EMT class years ago. And then started, uh, took the CNA class here in Salma, and then she can tell you where she's going now.
Hi, everyone. Jocelyn, nice to meet you guys. Thanks to you for having me. So out of high school, I went to Darniba High School. I graduated in two thousand seventeen. Right out of high school, I took the EMT course with Valley Rom. Um, I always knew I wanted to be in the medical field, so I knew that EMT was a stepping stone to that pathway. So I decided to take the course and um, for eighteen weeks, I got all the experience um, to learn what it's, as a first responder on a scene and stuff like that. Um, became certified. I was employed with a Life Star in Tulare. I don't know if you've ever heard of it. It's a private ambulance company that um, assists um, the Tulare Fire Department. And after um, I decided to continue my schooling in the, the healthcare. So I decided to take the EMT course. I was working on prereqs at Fresno City for my RN. When I was doing the E, um, CNA, um, I decided to get certified in that. And I ended up getting a job here in Rolling Hills, um, in here, right here down the street in Salma. And um, then that helped me get a position at Fresno Community. I currently work there right now. After I was done with the CNA course, um, it was actually another stepping stone for me to join the LVN program. So instead of going straight to the RN, I decided to do the LVN. And um, Valley Rom came and they gave us information about Clovis Adult and Fresno Adult. And we did some research um, on the schools and I decided to join. And I'm currently in the program and it's going well. And, but if it wasn't for Valley Rom, I wouldn't be in this position I am today. And I'm very grateful that I was, I had this opportunity. Are there any questions?
And so the goal is to have adults get certified and move forward to, to their, with their certifications. Um, I have a lot of information about those classes, but if you have any questions about uh, the other, well, uh, the other courses that we offer, let me know.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for being part of our team. We appreciate that. So I have, I'm going to put someone on the spot just for a couple of minutes. I'm going to ask Desiree Dugall to come up to the microphone, who's, who's been a part of the Adult School Perm for a long time. And she teaches full-time as a kinder teacher. And then she goes to work in the evening. And I like her to just share why she does that and why what we do or what we were doing in our district is so important.
Um, I started, it's, I think, twenty-eight years ago. Started working with um, kindergarten. I started teaching kindergarten over at Garfield Elementary. And then um, I moved on to Terry. And then got some information about the adults. I have always been very passionate about the families and the adults here in Salma Unified. There is, in Salma, there is something really, and I don't, I don't even live here. There's something really different about the Salma families. Um, they're very connected. You need something that they come in as a group to help out. And I've just always so much enjoyed being a part of the families. Um, when I first started teaching here, my husband and I used to make home visits to just try to get to know the families a lot more. And I started finding out that we really need to do something more, not just for our kids, but something more for the adults and that they really do want to do more for their families and their children. He are some of the hardest workers I've ever met in my life, and I'm old. I've met a lot of people. They, they have, um, they want to do more for their families. They work two, three jobs, sometimes, you know, fourteen, fifteen hours a day. And the opportunities are not always there. I've mentioned this a few different superintendents were. And I mentioned this, of course, to Dr. Shepherd and then to Dr. Wildman. And things just really started moving for adult school. When I talk about um, the enrollment of adult school pre-COVID, I don't ever like to talk about COVID because everybody's going to say, oh, well, it's because of COVID. So pre-COVID, we would always have um, a big enrollment, but the enrollment would not stay for adult school. So enrollment could be a hundred and seventy-five people enrolling and going through the process and not always staying. And we would have about fifty-seven people, fifty-seven adults staying with adult school. I'm so excited because we finished out, we had, I think it was about a hundred and eighty-five for ESL enrollment. And I left my papers over there, but um, I believe we, we finished with a hundred and seventy-nine for ESL. ESL. We had forty-four graduates last year for adult school. We serviced a hundred and four just in the fall. What's fabulous about with Fabrizio and, and uh, Valley ROP is if we don't have a room right now for them to get their diploma, they don't have to have their diploma just yet. We can get them into a career technical education class. It is so wonderful and so cyclical. And all we're doing is helping the students really. Because if our parents are leading by example and showing, and we're showing them how hard this is, life, how hard life is, and how much work you have to put into it, kids are going to succeed. We're really excited also because um, and then here comes Dr. Wildman, who's like, you know, my dream come true when it comes to helping others. She finds money between her and Dr. Shepherd, finding stuff, you know, to apply for, to get. We are now going to be able to serve folks two hundred to two hundred and fifty families, all while teaching the um, transition students life skills. We're going to be able to sign off on those wonderful resumes for them, saying they learned accounting. They learned, um, you know, everything, inventory. Um, we're now, we've got Alicia Gonzalez was awesome in getting the um, the graphics class at the high school involved in this. Where now they're going to, we're going to use some recyclable bags for um, the food pantry. We've got Sandy Wagner and um, is it Eduardo? With the avid kids that are going to be helping. And I'm also um, a part of the Salma Greater Kiwanas, which we are the parent company, company for the Key Club. So we're getting the Key Club kids involved. It's such a huge circle. And I'm, I'm so excited about all the things that are happening, all because we're centrally located. People can leave their house, maybe leaving a, an older teenager in charge, but you're not that far away. And we have, we have families and adults that are taking pride in themselves. When they're taking pride in themselves, their kids are going to see that. So I'm just, I'm very excited. We're, we also have a couple of other things happening with um, the American Rescue. I think it's the American Rescue Funds. We're going to be helping the homeless and foster youth, all because we opened up Washington. And you know, you know, and that's something probably Dr. Shepherd wasn't the most popular person in the world for that at the time. But it really has opened up. I mean, you gotta come to the school. It's like the fairgrounds are leaving. You know, at seven-thirty, it's so crowded and people are walking there. The weather was horrific a few weeks ago before, before break. They're there. They're showing up. And then, you know, if there's not an opening or there's, we've got a waitlist, we're over there pushing them over to Valley ROP. Or Reedley College. I mean, it's so much bigger than what I think you might know. So come over and take a look. And it's wonderful because now we have um, Rosa Bali, who that's her concentration is just going to be adult school. And I've known her for eighteen years. I know that she's going to put her all into this. She's not going to have any other interruptions. It'll just be adult school. So there's going to be a lot of attention paid to that. And if you would have talked to me last week, I was going a little bit crazy with purchasing and getting excited about some things. But I'm going to calm down. Um, but my husband's on board. He went out and bought a freezer so we could, we might've got a little bit crazy and I checked a few free boxes and I think we got about, I think it's sixty-eight hundred pounds of meat for free. So, you know, I'm a teacher. If it says free, we're checking those boxes. Um, anyway, it's really exciting. And Rosa and I welcome you to come on down. Um, the evening is when we're popping. So come on and see everything that's happening. It is just phenomenal. And I'm just so excited that these are the families that um, just need a little extra, just a little helping hand. They're not asking for it forever. They just want a little helping hand. That's it. And we get to do that. And you all are going to be a part of that. So.
Thank you, Desiree.
One of the times for the evening.
The time, when, when do students arrive?
Uh, ESL starts at five o'clock from five to seven-thirty. We also have two morning classes for ESL, and those begin from eight to seven-thirty. We have, um, then of course, our Adult Transition is in the morning. Um, but most of our evening classes for ESL or from, you know, from five to seven-thirty. During the daytime, we have one-on-one for independent study, and we also have independent study for the evenings. Um, I believe, do we have a? Valley ROP is all at night. Yeah. And it's just, I mean, I have a, the gal that was just speaking right there, she reminds me of how old I am. She reminds me of how old I am because I've had every single, but every single one in her family. And I think you said I'm getting somebody. Yeah, so I have. Also, I just, I've known a lot of these over the years and I've had, I've known a lot of these families. And now I'm getting their kids. So it's wonderful to teach in kindergarten, make those connections with the adults. And then let them know that there's other opportunities that, you know, they can they don't have to settle.
Yeah, they can continue to learn.
Yeah, we're just empowering. And that's just a wonderful thing to be a part of is be able to empower others.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is great. Um.
I do, I wanna say thank you. Thank you for
Thank you for the
Yeah, thank you for what you guys are doing with not just our children, but their families and our community. And, and, and really, and a thank you to the previous board as well.
That's
For having the, the intestinal fortitude to do what you did and keep it up, guys. You're doing great.
I mean, this is make the city proud too. Whoever's listening right now, the cities, if there is adults out there looking for it and they could have enrolled into this and I get a benefits for it. And then the job opportunities like um, these students give it. So this is great, great for the city. And there's nobody left behind it. So thank you.
I've always said it takes a village and I think we've put the right people in the right places to uh, ensure that we're all on the same same board, same ship, same vision. Thank you. Forever grateful. Dr. Shepherd, you have uh?
Nope. Thank you for coming tonight, everyone that participated. We really appreciate it.
So moving on next is the SUSD student internships.
So I've asked, um, I met with Superintendent uh, Lofaro and asked him, if you'll recall, but you may not have been on the board yet, so I can never remember, you know, the transition time. But we, we brought six students to present uh, that were involved in uh, internships with some commu- companies, including Harris Construction and I can't remember the other two. But um, we've been talking internally about doing some paid student internships i- in the district, like in our various departments. And um, so I met with um Fabrizio and asked him to bring an idea, a little proposal to our board here to, he's just gonna present tonight. We'll bring it back for action if you should, so choose. But I really would like to establish and look at a per uh, program for internships for our high school students. Um, hopefully this summer and then throughout the year. So I'm gonna turn it over to Fabrizio. Thank you again.
Oh, well, good evening again. Um, again, now that's talking about uh, high school internships and really give students work experience with uh, with what they're doing in high school already. So get the students who are interested in moving forward and do some internships. We've already had this partnership actually starting, uh, we started back in twenty-seventeen uh, with students and uh, then with Dr. Shepherd, we brought it back uh, last year and it was very successful. Um, and now we would like to expand this program. It's so, it's so good that um, really would like to show you what it can do. This is a little bit about Valley ROP. I'm just gonna skip a little bit because um, uh, what we do, and this is just information on, on how we serve the district. Um, all the programs that we have, we work with Dr. Pickle and the students here and um, Mr. Lane at the middle school. But um, wanted to focus real quick on um, on the current internships that we have. So right now we have a, a partnership with the city of Selma for the firefighting internships that we do and uh, SKF, Selma Kingsburg and Fowler Sanitation District. And those have been going on for a while. And students do rotations. Um, things that we would like to propose for um, for the new internships, new paid internships will be with uh, the educational pathway. Uh, working with Selma Unified Teachers, uh, Selma Unified and putting students as teachers' aid uh, with the extended learning opportunity program with construction. Uh, besides with Harris Construction, but also with Mark Wilson Construction. Um, and having the students do construction management here so they actually can see what they're doing with the new CT building and other programs and projects that they have going on. With business and technology pathway with Selma Unified, working with the IT department. And also automotive with the automotive uh, pathway and working with the Selma Unified School District, the transportation department, putting students in a work, in a work environment there. And there's so many other opportunities. We, we can have media students from video production or graphic design, do logos, do things like that and, and work with them. And uh, um, uh, how it works is, is really a, a good way for that we're able to work with the uh, with the employers um, and, and the students. So the students are basically um, in the pathways. They've already been on those pathways for sometimes two or three years. And they're recommended by the teachers and then they actually get interviewed. And so once they're interviewed, the employer selects the students that best fit their program. And and once they're, once they're selected, they actually become um, employees of Selma Unified School District. And so the, the great thing for that is that their employers don't have the liability and they're placed on their job to do again, work experience and an internship uh, with specific skills that they're gonna learn or just, just add to, to their resume. So well, we're safe. So I, I've obviously our firefighting students, they don't go and fight fires. They observe, they do a lot of other things with the fire department. Uh, same thing for SKF and same thing for what we would like to do with the other departments. Does anybody have any questions?
So Doug Wrights did agree to do one for Wilson Construction.
Yes.
Who is, um, they're constructing our career tech ed building and also the DO, so I connected him with Doug.
I just met with him uh, last week on Monday.
Yeah, before the COVID, I used to have my office, get a couple of students from Selma. We done three, four years like that. We're in engineering, they could learn the CAD. Work on a few hours after school. And it's, it's a, it's really great, the, the exposed to the student, you know, they could get into their uh, career, what they like.
So we'll be connecting with um, our department heads and see how many are interested in having some. I know, I do know that there's a couple of our directors definitely are interested in having some student internships, so.
Yeah, we met uh, with the, the after-school program director of the CCs. And uh, she was very excited. She really would like even to start in the sprint semester, during the spring break.
Yes.
If, if, if we can have a chance to get those students to a spring break, work with the after-school program during that spring break uh, period.
Yeah.
And then come back in the summer and start the summer experience.
Thank you very much. So we'll be working with Fabrizio on finalizing a plan and bringing it back from a purple by the bar. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, moving forward, review of uh, CA Dashboard and SUSD Differentiated Assistance.
So I'm asking Dr. Catania to provide you some information about uh, the uh, dashboard, the California Dashboard for uh, Educational Excellence and then differentiated in uh, assistance.
All right. We'll let the gentleman get the um, PowerPoint um, pulled up there. And you had him in your um, board packets. So this presentation is about, if you remember, um, the um, smarter balanced um, tests were given in the spring of twenty-twenty-two. And we already received the results for those, which we'll be referencing over in, when we do the math report in a minute. But we um, did a presentation um, a few months back in September, October to the board on those results from the Sback. And I just wanted to say as we start the, this presentation on the, not the math one, the one before. We need the other one, the one on the California Dashboard.
You don't have it?
Yeah, I, I CC'd Mark on it when I sent it to Rose. I'll get it in a minute.
So maybe talk about the California Dashboard.
So it, it would be like super easier if it was displayed. So the California Dashboard, um, it is a measurement that California puts together that has not only the academic results of the tests that were given in the spring, but it measures actually um, five local indicators. Um, things like, uh, one of them is around like the Williams Act. Do you have the correct teachers with credentials, facilities, what are the quality of your facilities and the correct um, curricular materials? Um, and then it also measures chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism, uh, suspensions, both ELA and math, um, as well as uh, let's see, it's five of them. Uh, we'll get there in a minute. So when the California Dashboard came out, which was more recent, and by the way, I think I said this, but in October, we did an hour-long workshop for the board prior to a board meeting. So I just wanna offer for those that weren't on the board when we did that workshop, I'm happy to meet with you individually and go over the California Dashboard much more slowly. Um, and so that the um, dashboard is meant to not only give you um, in a snapshot picture, picture, so to speak, how your kids are doing academically, but then those other things that are critical to student success, which is chronic absenteeism, um, your student suspension and how your English learners are doing, graduation rates. So those other things other than just the academic indicators. So California has a support system where if you have three, two or more subgroups that are in the very lowest scoring category on those indicators that they send um, a collaborative team to support you um, on that. So that um, you can, and you sit down, in our case, it's the County Office of Education. And you sit down with them and you go over what your strategic improvement plan is. And then they will, all right, here we go. So you go over that with them. And then their um, their role is to um, verify that the improvement plan that your district has implemented to increase your students' uh, academic achievement as well as reduce suspensions, reduce absenteeism, increase grad rates. They make a, they make a um, a, a decision whether or not that improvement plan is sufficient to um, so that your students will progress forward as they should. So as you can imagine here, I'm, I'm skipping forward now to some of this. There again, you, you all have this in your board packets, but it talks about that, the purpose of the dashboard. By the way, this is the front page of the California Dashboard. When you go to the California Department of Education dot gov website and go to the dashboard. So you would put in Selma in Fresno County and it has um, those five indicators I talked about, which will come up in a minute, but it also has things about your student population. So there's our enrollment. We're eighty-seven percent economically disadvantaged, thirty-point-two percent English learners and point-seven percent, seven tenths of one percent um, foster youth. But then it also has, and they call these little squares tiles, by the way. So if you hear somebody talking about the tiles on the California Dashboard, as you can see, this shows what are the different measures that they're using this year for all one thousand school districts in California? What are the measures they're looking at to see who needs some additional support? And um, I'm sure it'll come as no surprise, like if you look at that first tile on chronic absenteeism. So on this one, when it says very high for Selma, these are our tiles. When it says very high, that's because we have very high chronic absenteeism. And remember, chronic absenteeism is measured um, student by student for those students who miss ten percent or more of instruction in a year. So um, that would be every twenty days, let's say of a month. If a student missed two days, they would be considered chronically absent um, at that point. And then suspension rate. So as you can imagine, um, the idea is to lower our suspension rates uh, by our improvement activities. I think um, the English learner tile there, you can be proud of that because there were many districts that were um, very low with their English learner progress. But if you'll um, remember back in the last two years, presentations we've done um, work really focusing on our English learner students and making sure that all of our teachers are using the um, exact right curriculum and we're monitoring the acquisition of English of those students. And we have the administrators and the program managers all trained in walking through classrooms and making sure that we're seeing the instruction done with the English learner students is most effective. So um, so we're medium on the English learner, learner progress, which is great. And the grad rate, we're um, the grad rate, we're medium on that. And remember, this is um, the grad rate is a four-year measure. It's a four-year average. So our grad rate stayed at medium, even though we had to figure COVID into that. So that's good. The college and career indicators, they're not uh, reporting on that this year. Because of the COVID year, there again, it's a four-year average. And so um, because there were those years during COVID, they are choosing and the growth rate isn't the same. They're choosing not to report on this year. But then we have the academic areas of English Language Arts and Math that will be going um, ahead of. So this is what I talked about. There are six state indicators, which are these tiles we just looked at, and then the five local indicators. Um, and this is, I just said that too. This is basically that last bullet there. The state uses, looks at those indicators to identify LEAs that they feel need support to make sure that there's another entity looking at their improvement plan to make sure that those students are getting the most effective program to help them reduce that chronic absenteeism and reduce suspensions and improve the grad rates and the academic skills for those students. So um, this is, there again, this is the local indicators I was talking about. These you are just reported to you as a board once a year locally. And the priority one there, that's the Williams um, lawsuit settlement agreement things, teacher credentialing, instructional materials and facilities. We have number two is how we're implementing those standards. Priority three is parent and family engagement. So we have surveys we send out to the parents and that's a measure of that. Um, the local climate survey, this is where we actually survey the students and we're asking them such things as how safe do you feel at school? How safe do you feel um, coming to school and going home from school? Um, you know, how many fights have you witnessed on campus, those kinds of things? So that's a, a local survey that we do. And then um, access to a broad course of study, making sure that all the required subjects that we are required to teach kids were actually um, teaching. So the rating that we get, and I'm gonna skip that, this is the same as, this shows those tiles that we just said, showed. It's a list of them. Uh, what we're really measured on this year. So there again, it's those same ones that I just indicated and I'm getting forward. So we can start with this. So for twenty-twenty-two for this year, so the state looked at those six tiles and they're looking at our subgroups and how did our subgroup do in each one of those state measures of those little tiles? So, and by the way, when I say subgroup, because this question always comes up, a subgroup means at each school and student group, you have to have at least thirty in that category. So like thirty Hispanic kids, thirty African-American kids, thirty um, Native American students. That's how they determine subgroups. Um, if you have thirty or more, if you only had um, like two um, uh, American Eskimo students, they wouldn't constitute a sub, subgroup. And the bottom bullet there for homeless and foster, because those students are under such challenges um, always because the foster, as we know, gets moved around from home to home. Homeless, when you don't have a place where you can do your homework at night, where you can keep your computer, if you're Homeless, when you don't have a place where you can do your homework at night, where you can keep your computer if you're living in a car. Or living like three families to an apartment or something. For homeless and foster youth, if you have 15 of those students in your district, they're considered a subgroup. Because California knows how challenging it is for those students. So when you go to the California dashboard, we're going to look at chronic absenteeism, that first little tile. And it's very easy to do, and like I say, I'm happy to do an individual session for each one of you. But if you click on the tile, literally you put your cursor over there and click. It starts to tell you lots more information. So if we put our cursor on that and clicked, now with chronic absenteeism. You see down below there, it tells you how many subgroups of your students are in each category. So in our case, you can see there, we had eight of our subgroups that were very high for chronic absenteeism, meaning eight of our subgroups were high for chronic absenteeism. And if you think this is for the year prior, so it was for that, the, the, okay, we're in 2223, so it was for 2122. And so we still, if you think about last year, how many COVID outbreaks did we have? And we would tell the kids, if you have symptoms of COVID, at the very beginning of the year, stay home. Or, and then we evolved to come to school, we'll test you. And so I can tell you that the, of the school districts in Fresno County that are kindergarten through high school. Every single district had very high chronic absenteeism. Because whether the student is absent for a valid reason, like they had COVID. It doesn't matter, you're still considered chronically absent if you miss the two or more days a month, 10% of the instruction. So that's why we had eight subgroups. So if I had, if we were on our computers and I click on that tile of chronic absenteeism, it shows me who those eight subgroups are right there. So you can see that we have the different subgroups we have in our district. Our Asian, English learners, foster youth, Hispanic homeless, socioeconomically disadvantaged. Sometimes referred to as our Title I students, our students with disabilities and white. So every subgroup that we had, had a high chronic absenteeism rate. And this just shows you if there were some of those subgroups in the other categories of medium, low or very low, they would show up here. So differentiated assistance is then if we have two or more subgroups that get that low rating in any of those six tiles, so to speak. And by the way, Selma was in differentiated assistance also in 2018, for those of you that were here in 2018. And that was because of your student with disabilities and your English learners. So for the dashboard that just came out. The district is in differentiated assistance, like I say, like all other K-12 districts in Fresno County. And this shows you our three subgroups were students with disabilities, foster youth and homeless that had two or more areas that were very low. So chronic absenteeism, all of them. Suspensions were foster youth and homeless. And then a low grad rate was our students with disabilities. And then very low academic for ELA and math with, for our students with disabilities. And some of you, just to speak about chronic absenteeism once more. And that was kind of the reason for the, for the big focus on attendance that this year, we have to get our kids back in school. And so all the, all the efforts that have been made and the programs that have gotten started. Are, we all know that kids can't learn if they're not in school. And so I'm really excited to hear Mr. Lane, that you had a 95% attendance after we came back. That's, that's really great to hear. So just so the boards informed, so on February 6th, the county superintendent of schools office and our district education services team will sit down and look at the strategic education improvement plan, our five year plan. And so that they can have, have a opinion on whether or not that plan is going to bring about the improvements that we hope to see. And I can, just as an aside, since that used to be my job when I was deputy superintendent at Fresno County Office of Education, I'm pretty sure our plan will be good. So, but we'll report back to you on that. Any questions about that California dashboard? I'm sorry, it was like kind of drinking from a fire hose. But I'll sit down, like I say, at your, at your convenience and spend an hour with each one of you to go through that, if you'd like.
Can you put back up the dashboard real quick?
Sure.
So.
The tiles.
Yeah, just wait, so this handout isn't this part, right?
No, we're going to that next, we're specifically going to talk about math next, yeah.
Right, so this right here, you're just talking about the absenteeism overall.
Yeah, absenteeism and our, for those absenteeism is our biggest I guess you'd say problem, one of our biggest hurdles. And then also our suspensions of foster youth and homeless. So we're also looking and addressing that. And then our students with disabilities, of course, their ELA and math rate. I don't know if any of you caught, it was a week ago, so it was January, I don't know, whatever seven minus 23 is. A week ago, there was an article in the Fresno Bee where Clovis Unified has, and by the way, the chronic absenteeism, that is for all of our students in the district. Whether or not we have students with chronic disabilities, chronic diseases, all those kinds of things. And so there was an article a week ago, what Clovis Unified is going to do, because all districts are facing this. So what they're going to do is they're going to enroll all of their students that have medical issues. So they have to be absent. You know, when they, when their kids like get a cold, if, if you're a medically fragile student, even a cold could be life ending for some of those students. And so those students have to stay home and away from others as much as possible. So one solution that Clovis came up with is they are going to enroll all their medically fragile students to one school site. But the kids will stay at their homeschool, but they're going and receive their program at their homeschool, Buchanan, Alta, Sierra and Garfield. But their registration, where they're registered on paper, will all be in the Garfield medically fragile program. So it'll take all those kids out of the database at Buchanan High School and Alta Sierra. And my personal opinion is it's too bad that we have to revert to things like that. Which is a little bit of, you know, data manipulation. Rather than saying, these are our kids, these are the schools they go to. And we just need to look at how we can reduce that chronic absenteeism. And maybe, you know, go to online and hybrid programs for those kids when they need to be out. We now have, you know, we have the home hospital. So if a kid's going to get, be out beyond, is it 10 days or 14 days, Dr. Shepherd?
10 days, I think.
Yeah.
It has to be a long term medical.
Yeah, if it's a long-term absent, they get switched over to home hospital. And those days do count for them then. So as we're recovering from COVID, it's, it's the things that we absolutely will keep an eye on. And we're looking at particularly these three groups to look at how are we really addressing those three groups in particular in having their attendance rates improve. Okay. All right, and like I say, I'll go over the, I'll sit with you for the California dashboard because literally you can spend an hour, it's very fascinating, all you can find out for your district. Okay, so moving on to the next one, is that okay, President? Great, okay. So with the, with the, starting in the fall, Dr. Shepherd made a commitment that, and you actually passed board policy, that the board would be continually upgraded, updated on the progress of particularly English, the English language arts achievement and math achievement ongoing throughout the year. Because otherwise, what was happening across many, many districts in the past is, once a year, you get the Sback results. And you know, they're, they're usually not what you had hoped for. But then what happens is the board, unless you know, you change your policies to state that. The board doesn't get to see what progress is being made throughout the year. So that, and all of us need that information, vital information. So that we can adjust course, look at which of our students need more focused attention. And make sure we're getting additional resources and, and people to those students. So this is, we presented the math data once in November or September. And so this is your second update of the, the math data for our district. So I wanted to remind you from the beginning of the year that this was the spring test in 2020. So our, our latest state test, which was last spring in 2020, these are the results. Overall, as a district, 20% of the Selma students met or exceeded the standard for math. So that meant we had basically 79% of our students were not being, are not being successful in math. So, and especially when we looked at the language arts, the language arts proficiency is double what math is. So as a district, the math is at a critically low point. And so all of our schools and our principals have been focused on improving the math instruction and measuring the students and identifying students who are still struggling with math. And getting additional resources to those students. So we're going to start with the high school. So in grade 11 last spring, when the high school students, and only 11th graders take the math test in high school, by the way. Needless to say, every grade level, ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th, those teachers give their kids math tests. But the only state test that's given is to our 11th graders. And you can see here that only 11.81% of our students were proficient in math. Which needless to say, we, we have a lot of room for improvement. So we saw in November, the start of improvement. And so here's our latest update and Dr. Pickle can provide more information. I tried to condense this into one chart and not go, you know, too lengthy or too in-depth. But these are what you see on the column that is the right. These are the different math courses offered at the high school. And we can bring it back again, in the November meeting, we had a flowchart. And Dr. Pickle talked about why students are placed in these various classes. And we're looking at accelerating the learning of those that were very, very far behind. To get them caught up to where they need to be in the, in the math curriculum. So as we look here, you can see that the number of students is the next column. And then we have for the, their January testing round, the percent of students in each course that exceeded, met or exceeded the, the standards for that course. So if you keep in mind that only 11% were proficient last spring. And granted, this is a period of time from November through the first part of January. But as you can see there, in all courses, we're well above 11%. And so, and Dr. Pickle has it further broken down by teacher and by students. So that all of our math teachers are looking at which of their students were below 80% on their test and focusing additional instructional time, small group instruction and those things with the students. And then we also looked at the change percent column there. What we looked at is between last November and the January update. It, course by course, the red is we decreased the number of students that are performing at the 80% or above. If you think about test scores, you know, 80% is a B or above. What percentage of the kids are getting Bs or higher, so to speak? And green is the amount of students in that course are increasing the number of students above. So you can see the ones that I highlighted in yellow under the course name. Those are the courses you can see there where the decrease in the number of students that are performing at level B or above, the number had decreased more significantly than 10, 10%, because you're always going to have some variation. So, and the idea about the identification at this level is so then that Dr. Pickle and his administrative team meets with the teachers of those courses. And you can see under the percent not met, we specifically said the number of students. So on that top row, so the 47 students who were well below meeting the standards for that course. For those 47 students, what are, what additional resources are we doing to help those students? Because basically those students are on track for an F right now. And so that's the level that we have to get to, to help those students right away. And, you know, maybe they were on home hospital or something, but whatever it is, we have to look student by student and see what can we do to help those students. So you can see overall, again, by the exceeding or met column. We're well on track this year for many more of our students to be significantly on the state test to do significantly better. But we're still concerned about each and every student in the not met column as well, and they're addressing that. I see our student board member shaking his head, do you have any further comment on that? What you hear from students and what you see?
I, I know from experience that that test was exceptionally hard. It's, it's very hard when you're in this math, math one, math two, math three sort of system to catch up when you fall behind. So providing resources to help these students progress further. Whether that be after school time, before school time, would be very beneficial. Because I know personally, once I don't grasp a concept and my teacher moves on, it's very hard to catch back up. That test was really hard, and I know a lot of people around me said that, as you could see by the numbers. It wasn't easy whatsoever, so you're only going to see those students who, I marked it on the, I mean, on mine. Algebra Down, those are for people who don't exceed in math. So obviously that, that's already going to put them behind. And the failing rate in math one, I know a lot of people who have repeated it as a junior. So there are these large subsets of students who are not like not being helped whatsoever, it feels as they're being like left behind. So I just, I want the board to know that resources need to be provided. Math is a very struggling subject across all of Selma High, so.
And we know that math largely is, you'll hear many, many people say math, your, your success in math is a gateway to college, to doing well in college. So that's why, in fact, we had when Dr. Pickle and I came and Dr. Shepherd. We had students that, as you said, they would take math one as a freshman, they'd fail. They'd get put back in math one as a sophomore, they'd fail. And they'd get put back in math one as a junior. And it's like, that can't be, you can't do that and not provide additional resources. So that's why one of the purposes of the Common Core class was to, for this year, to take 136 of those students and provide additional intensive support for those standards that they need to master. And then hopefully, then they will catch back up. But there's, as you can see in that Common Core class, there's 47 of them that are still struggling. That we're looking very intensely and will be encouraging not only after school, but we want those students in summer school as well. Because they have to have time to catch up.
I also wanted to say here at Selma High, it feels very optional for math to be a subject for you to take. Because you're only required two years of math and only, you have to pass math one to graduate. And any of those other maths. And any of those other maths, algebra and below, they are, you need to pass one and then you pass math one, which I think isn't beneficial for these students to say, hey, you could fail, you don't have to move on to math two, math three. It's it needs to be pushed on these students more because I remember as a sophomore, people already moving past math are fine with failing it because they're like, oh, I could take applied math next year and still graduate. It is very harmful to these students that you as a district are allowing them to not or sorry, that they feel it's very optional to have math and that isn't beneficial whatsoever. So, thank you.
And and I think it wa- it was too easy to say, oh, but math one or math two is so hard. So lots of kids are failing it. And that's why Common Core and Algebra were created because no, those are the classes that are at your level to help you. So if you're still failing in those classes, then we've got to really investigate and see what's going on with those. And just as a also trying to help the advanced kids side. Math three is equivalent to Community College Math forty five. And in fact, in our endeavor to increase the number of college concurrent enrollment, dual enrollment courses. Next year, we'll be offering for students either in math three honors or the students that have proven they can do well, they'll be able to take concurrently math forty five and get college credit for their math in the math three class. So we're providing that as well. So we continue to really look at the students and provide all the resources we can, including additional sessions to help these students. Now moving on to eighth and seventh grade, here's part of the problem of our, why the high school struggles with math, right? Is so we knew that the seventh and eighth grade, these were their their test scores coming into the year. So if you've on the eighth graders, if you've only got sixteen percent of your kids coming into Selma High School that are the level they need to be in math, it's no wonder so many were failing math one. So there again, we changed the curriculum last year. If you remember, we went to illustrative math and it's got a software program platform called Desmos. And so let me move ahead here. So here is our update on our seventh graders. And you can see we have four teachers that are teaching at the seventh grade level. And so we are encouraged but still working because we have sixty one percent of our students that on their January testing were at eighty percent or higher on their tests. So we know that we are at the middle school level. They're increasing their performance. And I always say we're encouraged, but we're still focused on the students that are in that fifty to fifty nine percent column. And why those students are still failing in January on their test on integers and giving them additional support and time. Next is the eighth grade. And so there, now these eighth grade students, I'll tell you why this is even more encouraging. We aren't there yet, but this is more encouraging. Because these eighth grade students last year had the new curriculum. They had Desmos and illustrative math. So you can see they're at eighty two percent that have eighty percent or higher. So it's really looking encouraging that, and by the way, this year we have all the sixth grade teacher, the sixth grade students in that same curriculum now, the illustrative math with Desmos. So we can back it up even further to get these kids. If we can get them higher each grade level coming in, then we can push them on to where they need to be. While still, you know, I always look at the fifty nine to fifty percent column and go, okay. So we have, you know, twenty two and seven. So what's that? Twenty nine, thirty, thirty one and five. So we have, oh, it's right there, thirty six. So there's still thirty six students in the eighth grade that are really struggling. So we're still talking with their teachers and focusing on what's going on with those kids. And then when we go to the more elementary levels, so this gives you an idea what were their test results last spring. So you can see we have everywhere from fifth grade with sixteen percent. And then we had fourth grade, third grade, sixth grade. So we're really looking at how they're coming along. So I'm sorry, this is kind of a busy chart, but I didn't want to have pages and pages and pages of slide. If anybody wants to see it more broken down by school, we have that. In fact, our jobs, as we're really looking at the math mastery improvement with our PLC improvement model, we do look at all of us that are working on this. We're looking at every classroom at every school and looking at where are those students that need more support. So you can see there where that blue arrow is as opposed to these, this level of students meeting proficiency. You can see here, we have by grade level, starting with kindergarten there, we have eighty one, eighty, sixty four, fifty nine, forty, fifty three and forty three. Is that right? So if you remember last, last in I think it was September, grade three was far and above had more struggling students than any grade level. So it seems like we're doing a little bit better with grade three now, but now you can see grade four is of great concern to us as well. So and you know, every unit, the material becomes, it's more new concepts that the students haven't seen yet. So and especially when we're into division and fractions in grades three and four, it becomes more difficult for student. But that means we need to get more resources, manipulatives, additional time. We hear from the students that student engagement, the students keeping their mind on task because it's hard cognitively, right? If you're looking at something and you don't know quite how to do it, your brain just wants to switch off. So how do we make those kids persist and learn that? We call it student engagement. So we're looking at what additional training can we bring in for the teachers? So that they can learn additional strategies to keep kids engaged and be willing to persist even when the learning is hard. And so these are the the areas and the focus groups where we continue to work. But we're we're also encouraged by the uptrend in these figures as well. And we conclude that the mass master, the math mastery project, you approved the contract for writing the curriculum, they are taking the Go Math publisher curriculum, but breaking it down into very small step by step instruction for the students to make it more understandable for them. So we can see here that that is working. And we need to take another look at fourth grade. How can we break it down even further for students? So that is our math update and we'll be back next month with ELA. Questions?
I heard you, you know, the seventy nine percent, you know, it's fall feeling basically math in high school level. And well as the seventh and eighth grades. So either, I know we changed the curriculum last year. Either it's not working out, or maybe we should wait till the end of the year, look at it. Or maybe, maybe it's a teacher's not it. Change the method. They they probably needed to do the teaching, the change the method or something, or maybe giving out more homeworks. And I remember when I was in high school, I get a lot of homeworks in the math. And which I will spend some times with my parents or the elders to sit down and do that. And and so I don't know what's why we are, we need to look into it. We didn't look into very deeply. This is very sad that, I don't know, I mean, once they get into college, what they're gonna do? I mean, the college is so hard. And we could let them pass here, let them graduated. Once they go to college, they're not going to survive. They're gonna, they're gonna go out. I mean, if you don't have math, don't have, you know, English languages arts. And those are the two things that, so we need to be work on it very deeply. In my opinion, that's my, as been as a board member, I think this is the one of them's that we always wanted a achievements of the students. And without this, you guys that we weren't able to achieve it. You guys, teachers, everybody needs to be worked together to make this better. I don't want to see twenty eighteen percent, you know, next year. I hope we could go up at least twice. You know, either change that, who teachers doing it better, maybe look their method. Maybe they're doing better that. And maybe my kids, my my son, he's in the ninth grade. And he, the math questions that he get, the way that some of those they're teaching out there is a totally different method. I wouldn't teach them that way. I have a minor in math. And maybe they they need to look into it. That too, it's not only the, you guys have a nice curriculum, but how about the teaching method? That needs to be looked into it too, in my opinion.
And we're we're asking those exact questions of the teachers of those students. Is because the teachers are the experts in the room. And interestingly enough, across the district, there's always teachers that have almost a hundred percent of their kids are achieving on these tests. So one thing we're doing is getting those teachers together with other teachers for whatever reason, saying, well, how did you teach that? How did you teach that with the kids where you got? And that's not saying there's bad teachers and good teachers. There's just saying there's different ways, as you said, there's different ways to explain things. So you know, in our teacher's toolbox, it would be great for them to have two or three ways to explain it. And so maybe this teacher has a way that like kids are getting it more. And so but we do hear from the teachers across the board. Kids check out in their brains. We can see it in their eyes. We have to, we need to to have more engagement strategies. Especially coming back from COVID, at least this is our second year back from COVID. Last year was horrible. You know, kids weren't even used to being back in school yet. So put something hard in front of them and it was really challenging.
Yeah, and maybe the method of scoring, instead of giving quizzes seventy percent, maybe the fifty percent might be the homework. Let's see, give them progress. And we wanted economic, you know, their brain needs to be built up. Yes, not only the testing on it, like he said, you know, the testing is very hard. Maybe the teachers needs to look into the, having them, giving them the more homeworks, getting them. If the student try it, when I was at the, my class calculus, if I try that answering the questions, I get fifty percent credit or seventy five percent, at least I'm trying it, even though I get the wrong answer. You know, maybe look into that strategy. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. If the students aren't getting it, if they're just not grasping it and we're ready at the end of the year, is, are those students being pushed to the next grade, the next grade? So by the time they get to the high school, they're ready, they're ready.
Do you want to speak to that, Mr. Lane, for the middle school? What are you doing with those students that are still in that fifty percent category?
You know, I I went and I toured one of the classes. I don't remember who the teacher was, but they, she was fabulous. I I went to the Abraham Lincoln last year, the year before. And they, the kids were talking about how fast the water was moving per cubic square. I didn't even know what they were talking about, but she made it so engaging that the kids were actually raising their hands like, I know, I know, I know. That's what we need, you know, like they, the teachers have to make it. And I think the way she did it was because she was relatable to them. And she talked in their language and you know, I I think we have to think out of the box and you know, like oh, one of the words, if you want to get killed in my house, is say, just chill, mom. And I'm like, oh, no, you didn't tell me to chill. But that's their, that's their, you know, or my son to say, oh, hey, bro. I'm not your brother, so don't even, but that's, you have to be relatable to them. And it's not when we went to school where we were very, I'm not saying we're not respect, you know, like, there's a line where you cross. But this teacher was very engaging and she had them like, it was exciting to them and they learned it. Where you has a, you have a teacher who's not relatable. And I don't say you have to use the words that they use nowadays, but you just have to be relatable. You have to, you know, maybe you don't know how to, you know, and I shared this story about my daughter, like she was not getting math. So we we did it like, hey, let's sing a song. So I sang a song with her. Blah, 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 blah. I didn't even know what I was talking about. But by the time she got to her class, she remembered that song. And so she's like, one plus minus two, you know, and we just did that. And it really helped her. But the teacher wasn't engaging her. It's when she came home and we said, yeah, let's sing a song, a rhyming song or this, you know. And and I think that's the way some of the teachers have to approach the kids nowadays. And you know, and to continue to push the kids like, like if I don't grasp it, but okay, now I'm going to fourth grade. I didn't grasp it. Okay, now I'm going to fifth grade. I'm still in the fourth grade and you keep pushing me up, pushing me up. So then when you get to high school, Dr. Pickle has all this like, what do I do now?
Adam, would you like to speak to that? Because I saw you nodding your head.
So I'd like to say I was in the Selma School District from kindergarten to sixth grade and then middle school. I left and I came back for high school. The most fundamental years of my learning were, of course, elementary school. And some of like my most skills that I use now came from those engaging teachers that who I still respect to this day. Because they taught me those fundamental math lessons that I need now in my statistics class. And when I'm able to connect with the teacher or learn because of their teaching style, the way they communicate with me, I was able to grasp their learning. And I know other teachers like that I've had in high school. I completely clocked out of their class because of the way that they taught me, the way they communicated. I didn't feel as though their teaching methods would benefit me in any way. They wouldn't help with homework or they just sort of avoided those sort of lessons. Even now, I'm dealing with some of those same issues. So it comes down to, I'm not saying blame the teachers, but observe the teachers, see what what you need to comment on about their style. I've had a few teachers in high school who have greatly helped me or greatly like, I don't know how to say, put me at a disadvantage as as far as my math skills go. I could accredit a few teachers to helping me with those fundamental math issues. I was in Visalia where I took math one as an eighth grader. And I took seventh and eighth grade math accelerated in one year to take math one. And I was very rushed through that process and I got Bs and Cs, but I was still allowed to move on. And when I came here, I took math one again to get a higher grade. I didn't get that much of a higher grade. I kept Bs. But it was that teacher who helped me gra- like grasp those skills to feel comfortable in math two and then math three and now statistics. So I great, there's just, please look into these teachers because hear out to the kids because it's not always their their learning. It's about how the teachers are teaching.
Are we asking the students? Are we asking the, not just asking the teachers what you're doing to get your scores up? Are we asking the students? Hey, what did you, what did you get most from this teacher? How how did they help you or is it?
I did ask a student who graduated from Selma High and I'm like, hey, how'd you like it? He says, it was the most boring experience of my life. And I said, what is those teachers need to interact with us and they need to make it interesting? And as soon as I got into my classes, I was like, whatever, I just gotta get out of here. I didn't, I, it made me sad to hear that.
So to answer your question directly, and you weren't on the board yet, but we do a climate survey at ALMS and we'll be doing another one in the spring and we ask very specific questions. Oh, yeah, these are all the kids. And how connected they feel to the school and is there an adult you can trust? And I I remember a number of the statistics, but but one that really jumped out at me was over ninety percent of the kids said, I believe my teacher expects the best for me. It was over ninety percent. I, we have an ALMS teacher here, Mr. Braun this evening, who we're talking about this passion and engagement. I invite you to come over to ALMS and go into his room and and just see the the time and effort he spent to make it a very engaging and inviting environment. And and we have a a middle school full of teachers who are really engaging and that really care about the kids. And I won't, I won't belabor the point, but something else that's noteworthy is the commitment to mental health that the district has made with social workers and counselors and clinicians has been huge. Because some of these issues that our kids are dealing with and that we can speak to as adults, when you're dealing with those, you can't focus with what's going on in class. And this has really helped. It's it's helped with the counseling and the connectivity. And and the one other thing And and um the one other thing, and I talked to Dr. Shepherd about this, we've had a great reduction in a lot of the discipline issues at ALMS, and I think there are a few reasons for that. But two, two of the biggest reasons as well as the PBI aids that the board, previous board approved, where we have two eight hour aids. Positive behavior instructional aids and their whole job is to connect with these kids. And and they're intervening right off the bat with minor infractions. We catch it before they get too escalated. So I think there's a number of things the district have had put into place that have really helped us um along this uh journey that we're on together.
I think we do have, we, Abraham Lincoln does have excellent teachers. They're engaging. I mean, I think it's a history teacher when you barely walk into the gay but office and I say it all the time because I visit his class. And he gives out free books and he plants his own garden outside his office. But when I walked in, I was like, I want to come to his class. It was very engaging, very. And when I went the next time for the open house, I couldn't even get in. It was, there's a line out the door just to get in there. That's the kind of teachers that. That you remember for the rest of your life, because he was engaging, he was exciting, he was like, oh, I want to learn. I mean, these kids were dying to get in there. And that's what we need. But we can't keep pushing them to the next grade if they still haven't grasped what they have there.
So one of the things that um in these conversations at the professional learning communities. And the principals share, and when they go on the observations, we talk with our principals as well as. Now, I want to ma- make mention again of what Dr. Catania mentioned about engagement strategies. And that is something that we are going to focus on on our pre-service days of helping and working with teachers and giving them. Some strategies to engage students more. That's going to be real focus for the. Even though I'm not going to be here, we're planning it now because if you don't get things lined up, it won't be ready. But that is something that we're really looking at. We'll be connecting with teachers on their thoughts about that as well over the next few weeks, so.
I just wanted to speak about, um, we also have the climate survey. We uh issued that to students in the springtime. We did that last spring. We'll be doing it again. This spring. Ask those exact questions. Um, but also uh President Alanis, uh, what you're stating with. Putting students in the same class over and over again, trying to and expecting a different result. Um, that is our definition of insanity. Um, we have got to engineer um classes and placements that best serve that student. Um, at the level, we have to meet them at their level and bring them up. If we're putting a student in math one and then they're failing, we turn them right back in and put them in math one. Um, and expecting the teacher to be able to diversify that instruction with that tier two instruction when you have. You know, a class of thirty-two and fifteen students are on task moving forward. Well, you have, you know, seventeen students. Um, and we all know the eighty-twenty rule, right? At eighty percent of your students have it, you need to move on. Well. You know, when you have that type of a balance, you're having to leave behind seventeen kids. And that's not acceptable either. And so we have to do better with our tier two instruction, which is some of the things we're, we're looking at. Um, with the program, the online program that you've approved with the cellus to be able to do that tier two intervention during class. Um, with while the students are moving into groups. Um, and we're going to be working with the math department to roll that out in the springtime. Um, but then we have the other placements for students. Um, because we do have a graduation requirement of algebra one. It's a state requirement. And if a student does not pass math one, they will not graduate from high school. However, they may meet all of their other requirements. And it's a, it would be a a tragedy to have a student not graduate from high school because they haven't met that algebra one requirement. So we uh got together with the math, math department and figured out a way that we can. Put those students in actually algebra one and move them forward so they can meet that graduation requirement after they've attempted. To move through our one, two, three program if they are eligible to do so. Uh, many times we get students from the middle school and that's why we started Common Core. Um, those students were not at the level to be placed in one. And if we placed them in one, we'd be placing them there. Um, as as a detriment to that student because it's way above their head. So we placed them in Common Core and their sequence would be Common Core one, two. Um, and then in their senior, they would have the opportunity to do three. Um, but then with the math test, with that math test written at the math three level. That student's never going to be exposed to that math three level. And so. Um, we're doing ourselves a disservice because that student is not at grade level to meet that junior test in math three. Um, so we're, we're kind of a, you know, walking a tightrope. We, do we meet the students and give them? The math instruction which they will be successful and meet them at their level and try to build them. Or do we drop them in the middle of a one, two, three program and hope that they can glean something to prepare for a test? Um, I think we all know the answer, right? Meet the student at where they're at. And hopefully we can accelerate that learning with proper intervention so we can get them to math three level and get them prepared for that state test. But we're, we're doing everything we can. And I know that our teachers at the high school, um. They wring their hands about those scores and they are, they are struggling every day to reach those students. Um, and I know that, um, as Adam says, there are some teachers that um that students connect with and some that don't. But I know that every one of our teachers uh at the high school in the math department care about those students and they really, really. Are worried about those math scores and really want those kids to succeed.
I have a comment though, um, is um, President Dallanis had mentioned earlier, he takes a village. It's just not the teachers. It takes the administration. It takes parents. It takes everybody working together to help these students pr- succeed. So um, and I'm happy that you're going to be putting in some strategies or whatever to help. Uh, with teaching, teaching students better or whatever, connecting with them. Um, and so that makes me happy that it does take more than just one group of people.
Absolutely. And it's wonderful that um in our adult school that we could have these programs that may be exposing the parents to. Math concepts because what we have is an education level where our students leave the classroom and they go home. And there's not that support that Mr. Soto talked about with his extended family uh providing that help in math. Um, I, I, I'm not a mathematician myself. I have a high school student. He comes home and asks for help with that math. I'm looking at that going, well, now. Let me call somebody. I got to phone in some support here. Um, but we do have uh that tutoring support online. We, we have uh have that program, um, because that support is not available with our parent community. Um, and so um when the students go home, they're on their own many times and that, that the struggle is real. And so um we really, really have to, uh, I've often said, if it's important to us, we'll put it in school day. And so we have to find a way to get that tier two instruction and build those skills in the, in the classroom.
Okay, so I got a couple of questions and a comment. Uh, I'll go with the comment first because everyone's kind of set their piece and I'll say mine. A little backstory, when I was in high school, I failed algebra a few times. But that was one of my best teachers, one of my favorite teachers. Cause there's one thing he said that I kept in my mind ever since then. And that is, it's better to know how to solve a problem five different ways than to know how to solve a problem just one way. And why this is important. Education from as I understand it. Requires a few things. You have to have a person willing to take a resource, something that you're teaching, a book. And relay it to somebody in a way that they can understand it. You have to have somebody who's willing to listen, to learn and to ask questions so they can understand. Then you have to have a challenge and you have to have a goal. If you have those four things, you can teach somebody to do anything. I know this because when I was in high school, my grade point average sucked big time. But yeah, I learned. When I went to college, I had one professor who used to work with Einstein for trigonometry. Brilliant guy, sat there, everything went over my head. Glazed over, clocked out, wondering why I was spending my money there. Because I was going to college and like, well, I can't get this, sunk the class. Went to another college and took trig again. This time I have farmer, guy was a math historian, took the time to explain it. The only difference between the material that was being taught. Was the person teaching it and me asking questions. The first time he didn't ask questions, I just sat there. You know, I should, I should be able to understand this guy. He's worked with Einstein. Why am I going to question him? The other guy asked us to ask questions. Why, why is it this? Why is it that? Why is there a radio? Why is, why, why, why? And he took the time to teach us and I learned it. The key point is this. The numbers we're seeing here, as I'm reading them, kind of a little confused with them, looks like we're doing a little bit better, which is good. The worry that we all have is the kids aren't getting anywhere. Maybe they're not being challenged, but more importantly, maybe there's a disconnect in how to relate to the kids, that information. That can be understood. And more importantly, maybe the teachers don't hear from the students like, hey, I need the help. Cause I know a lot of times whenever you have a hierarchy and a teaching environment is a hierarchy, teachers in charge. Students are over here, they're supposed to learn. Sometimes it's kind of for the sake of time, hey, don't ask questions, just go with it. And you can't have that if you want to learn. If you want these kids to advance in the real world, they gotta be willing to ask questions, even when people don't want them to. That's the only way they'll learn and that sometimes seems like it's not there when I look at things that go on when my kids are going to school. Why is it that way? Well, I don't know that you're supposed to do it. That's not an answer. You gotta ask, you need to comprehend because comprehension is the key to intelligence. And the key to enlightenment, the key to education. You can't have comprehension without questioning. Just my two cents.
And just a final comment, I think these um scores you see are update today. Kids are doing much better at all grade levels. But we know that's mile marker one of the ten miles we have to go. So yes, we do fully expect to see much better results this coming year. But we know as we have these programs stay in place and we stay the course with the new. Um, curriculum that they have been using, that the teachers have been telling us, uh, the kids. Are doing better with that, but we need more engagement strategies. Well, that'll be then we'll get mile marker two and mile marker three um as we continue to go down the road. So we're very encouraged by these, but knowing it's the start of a long journey. And we won't be, we won't be there until we have all of our kids um successful. So thank you for um your time and taking a look at these and we'll continue to report to you. Thank you, Kitty.
Already forgot where I was.
Number six, adopt the board of policy.
Okay, number six, adopt revised board policy administrative regulation five, one, four, one, twenty-one. Administering, administer. Administering, I can't even say.
Administering.
Administering medication and monitoring health conditions.
So we brought this um board policy to you last board meeting. So what I have asked our team. Is to break out the two issues that were contained in the board policy that were new. One is um the medication of administering Narcan in the, in the need of when needed. And then the other one was the administration and the implementation of a plan for any, any student that has a. Doctor's prescription for medicinal cannabis. So you separate, separated them out because based on the conversation and input from board members, thought we are just, we. Totally want to get the, the, I believe they both should be passed, but to give you an option, we'll separate. But before we uh um do that, I'd like to thank and acknowledge our three school nurses that are here in attendance tonight. Cory, April and Jordan, if you would stand up and give a wave. These folks are very passionate about the work that they do and um. Have uh had a lot of input and conversation about these two issues. So we're going to ask that you. Uh, take action separately on the two issues and let's move forward. So the first one up is uh five, one, four, one, two, one, A, which would allow the district. As set forth in the policy and described to administer Narcan in the case of an uh emergency. And it shows theirs was last week, the training, where it's going to be store, so on and so forth, so. Any questions about it that um I'll have our team come up if they have any, if you have any questions, you can ask our nurses and Mrs. Weems.
I think personally, um, I'm sorry, can I?
Of course.
Um, Norcan, I, I don't know. If you administered Norcan and somebody doesn't need it, it's, I was told it's not going to have any detrimental. Um, issues, but Norcan should be all over the campus, available to anybody who needs it in emergency purposes. Just everybody get trained. It's, it's needed.
Yeah. Well, I, I have to say that I think it's needed, but I don't think it should be all over the.
I think, well, you know what, if you, if they lock it up in the office and you're like, hang on. Let me run to the office, get the key, unlock it. Well, you're going to be gone.
You want to address that, folks?
Yes, uh, so Narcan is an emergency use drug used to reverse the effects of opiate use. Um, it's an opioid antagonistic uh class. Um, and yeah, in the county, the public health, they want to get it in as many hands as possible. Um, try to treat it more as like a, how we do with AEDs now, now it's a. First line of uh emergency use, you're still going to call nine one one, you're still going to do that stuff, but it's a short term thing that can save lives. Um, and yes, you can give it to someone, it won't have any effect if they are on opiates. It doesn't affect them at all. Um, so there's not a reason why you wouldn't use it if you suspect someone with an opiate overdose.
Do you know if um if someone unfortunately has to use that, is there like a time limit or is it just depends on the person?
I mean, the.
If you have to use it, you, you take in whatever, what, what is that?
I mean, the quicker you can get it to the patient or student, the better. Um. Yeah.
Is there like a timeframe? Do you have to give it to them within fifteen minutes?
Well, no, you want to give it to them as soon as you can, as soon as you know that they're, they've overdosed, you want to administer the medication as soon as possible.
Or believe they've overdosed, yes.
And this side of medicine, we're giving it to students that if we expect an opiate overdose, it's, they're going to be stopping breathing. Um, they're going to have a loss of consciousness. So it's a little emergency situation that you'd be using it in. So fifteen minutes might be too long.
Yeah. I was told it was like two minutes or something. You had to give them within two minutes.
You, you just try to administer as soon as you can.
Yeah. As far as the availability throughout the campuses, I'm going to lean on our health team to talk about that in the future. But right now we would just like to be able to administer it.
Would you like a motion? I'll make a motion. Sorry, 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 bro.
It's bruh.
Sorry, bruh.
Well, that even sounds good.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve um? Uh, regulation five, one, four, one, A, Norcan.
I second it.
Roger uh made a motion to approve it. We have a second. I mean, Roger. Joe made a motion to approve and Estella seconded. All in favor?
I, no.
Opposed?
One, one, okay. Okay, the second um board policy is five, one, four, one, two, one, B. This is the administration of um medicinal cannabis for those students who have a um. Doctor's prescription. I do not see this as a wide reaching issue. However, there may be those instances when it does help a student, particularly some students with severe disabilities. Um, so we separated it out. This is separate motion and you have any questions for our health providers here?
Oh, I got questions. Okay, so I read it and I should have brought it with me, cashing, you know, in the back somewhere. Um, according to what I was reading, it says that the school staff is not allowed to give them. And is not allowed to administer the drug. And the idea is that it allows a parent upset student to come in and administer that drug. There's a few things I, I, I wonder about with that. The first is, and correct me if I'm wrong. Um, cannabis is considered a controlled substance, much like Adderall, much like Ritalin. And as I understand that if a parent has Adderall or Ritalin, they're supposed to turn that into the office so that the nurses can administer it. If that's the case, why is there this change in policy?
It's only for cannabis and Mr. Medina, we discussed it that length. It's only for cannabis and Mr. Medina, we discussed at that length. It's because it's a different type of narcotic. So.
Yeah, but I've talked.
We can sit here and debate it all night. If you don't want it, just vote no, because you know, I'm sorry to be rude, but we've spent hours on this and to me, it's an opportunity, if a parent chooses to take time out of their day and come and give it to their child that they chose to, then that's their right. Um, and I would want to have as parent not be able to do that if in fact they found that to be helpful for their child.
Well, here's, here's my take on it is that the reason why this, this bothers me. Aside from the idea that it, it's a difference in policy is that essentially what you're saying is that a parent who has a child that needs Adderall can go to the nurse and the nurse will handle it. They can go about their day, they can go where they can take care of their life. But you're telling a parent who has a kid who has to have medical cannabis that no, you have to now take time out of your day to come and take care of your kid. Cause the district doesn't want to touch it.
No, that's a state law.
None that was.
So we're not going to go against state law. Okay. So that's the way it is in law.
But the law doesn't make any sense.
Well, you know, you can talk to somebody else about that, but right now we're trying to figure out what to do in our district. So. Yeah. I mean, we can sit here and debate it longer as we've already done, Mr. Medina.
It just sounds like a hot potato to me in the sense of.
You can vote accordingly.
Yeah.
It was a state law, what about federal?
That some of it.
Question.
It's, it's new for use, right? And they're just looking at using it in the school system. And the regulations are not in place yet to implement it in the school system where it is in place to have it for use at home. Um, the parents are trained, they know how to use it, and it's not been implemented in the school systems yet. I have no doubt that it'll eventually get there and it will come that way when all of the regulations and the policies are in place in the state of California. Um, it is a good tool for parents who need it. Um, if you see children who have intractable seizures, and this is one of the only methods to treat it. Um, it's an excellent tool for those parents who need to use it. And it keeps our licenses safe while the policies are getting in place and allows the parents to have an option if they need it.
Thank you, April.
I'm, I'm a plumber. You guys are the medical professionals. What do, what say you? Yes, you all, you.
I mean, if I had a child who had seizures or some type of arthritis or something where medicine didn't treat what they had, and that was an option for them, of course I would.
Okay, so you're all, you're all three nodding your head, so I'll make a motion. Let, let me, before we do that, let me ask it this way, same question. If the child was having a problem and they needed the medication and we had it, knowing full well that way it's set up, would you give it to the child to save their life?
None of these meds would be for saving a life. It would change a circumstance.
It's not considered a lifesaving medication. It is one to promote comfort.
Yeah, cause I'm just a little, like I said, it sounds like the state wants us to do it, but they want us to keep our hands off it because they're afraid of the money. They're afraid of if we violate federal law, that somehow it's a gray area and it, and it kind of sounds like a gray area. At least it does to me. So I'm like, if we're going to do it, then we do it all the way. We do it the same way we handle any other controlled substance.
We're not able to do that at that time, at this time, we're not able to do that.
Why do it?
Then you can vote accordingly.
A part of it too, I think is they're trying to continue the care that they've already established at home.
Right.
Between the doctor and the parents and the child.
The consistency.
Because it's prescribed, right?
It is prescribed.
Description, yeah.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions? Concern? Do I have a motion to approve? Policy one, five, one, four, one, two, one, B, B?
I'll make a motion.
Rod. I'm sorry.
Hey, bro.
Thinking about him.
He's talking about me. Uh, Joel made a motion to approve. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Est, Est, I made a second. All in favor?
Aye. No.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion pass.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Uh, moving forward. Um. Number eight, review and consider new board schedule of meeting.
So at the board's request, we've discussed among us to change the board meeting dates to Tuesday. Um, and as a result of the conversations that I've had with each one of you, proposals on the table this evening to move the date, the board meeting date to Tuesday and the schedule is included for action.
Do, uh, does anybody have any questions? Do I have a, a motion to approve? The new board schedule?
Make a motion to approve that, um, the new board schedule. Only the one thing with the eight PM is closing. I, I doubted.
Well, that's a good goal.
Five thirty to eight.
Uh, well, we'll try. There's always a goal. We're going to be working on that. Okay? We're going to be doing a better job with the schedule.
So we have a motion, we have a motion made by Nick. Do we have a second? We have a second made by Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Uh, to adopt the revised board, I mean, uh, the new board schedule. Moving on to educational services. Uh, prove revised English language learner reclassification.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, first up we have Raquel Hammond, who will explain a little bit about our English language learner reclassification criteria. Um, the board and the district periodically review our classification, reclassification criteria for English learners. And we've made a recommendation for a slight revision to our current criteria. And Raquel will be here to explain what that is.
Good evening. As you recall, I was here a couple of board meetings ago and we spoke about our Lexile measures. And the reclassification criteria form that you have reflects the move to Lexile measures. So as a reminder, it was one of the pieces that we, we spoke about that we're using it for goal setting in our classrooms in addition to considerations regarding moving all of our library books to have the Lexile measures on the book. So this is another way to align ourselves to um, the work that we're currently moving forward with. Um, so the reclassification of our English learners is extremely important as um, was mentioned earlier at one of the board presentations that we are doing well, um, with regard to the progress of our English learners. So our goal with revising the criteria is to ensure that all of our students have that ability to be reclassified. And going back to the thought that our students, one of the criteria points is that they do receive a four on the LPAC. And we all know that the LPAC is a rigorous test for our English learners. And so that they're showing that there's, uh, gaining that acquisition.
And so as part of the reclassification criteria, Raquel brought um, the revision, the possible revisions to our leadership team, uh, principals and program managers as well as D-LAC. Um, and the recommendation stands to change our local criteria to Lexiles rather than the STAR reading exam.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve this item one.
We have a, we have a motion to approve. Made by Nick.
I'll second.
We have a second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Two school accountability report cards.
Um, yes, these, uh, school accountability report cards are an annual requirement. Our school principals work on their SARC forms and make any revisions that we have. You'll notice that some of the fields are blank and those are fields which are filled in by uh, the California Department of Education. So we're waiting for data in those fields. Uh, otherwise it, um, the SARC reports are a way for schools to report on progress in achieving their goals. And the public and parents, uh, may seek out SARC reports to evaluate and compare their schools. They're available on the CDE website. They will also be available on our website in both English and Spanish after they're submitted and completed.
Does anybody have any questions?
I got a ton of questions, but I don't think we want to be here all night. Um, there are a lot of reports, I'm still going through them and I started going through them during the week and my Chris got email. But nothing to bring up here, but it's just one thing is that I like the fact that we're seeing them. You should see them more often and parents should really look at them. So.
They don't change much from year to year. The principals do go in and update, make sure that all the information, the names and the numbers are correct. Um, but for the most part, they are the same report year to year.
Is this posted up at the school sites where parents can see it?
Uh, yes, exactly. So they get posted on our district website and then a teacher, a parent, I'm sorry, or member of the public could look up and say, oh, I'm curious how many kids go to Wilson and what is their data and what, what happens at that school for parent education? And so it's just a way for people to be able to look up each individual school site and get some details about that school.
Do I have a motion?
I like a motion.
Mark made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Nick second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Facilities? Operations and maintenance agreement with Site Lodge IQ?
Okay, there we are. Um, so the current operations and maintenance agreement that we have um, for our solar structures is set to expire on February fifth. Um, we did, we had already started efforts to find, um, good service at a much lesser cost. Um, part of the energy project proposal that came to you, um, a few meetings back uh, was a proposal for an agreement with Site Logic to provide those services. Um, we were, um, we had the agreement with I C for the last 10 years. Um, so we have requested a five-year agreement with them. Uh, we are actually going to save about almost $43,000 per year based on what we had been paying for the last 10. Uh, so we're really excited about that. It does not include, it includes everything that we were getting before. It does not include uh, the washing of the solar panels, which was actually included previously and had not been, uh, being done. Um, but, uh, putting that in the contract would have added a lot more cost to it uh, for the amount of time that we need it. We have a 90% guarantee performance um, in our contract, uh, with them or in this contract and, uh, we, we can contact, contract directly with uh, company to wash the solar panels as we, as we need to.
Anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, facility item one.
Nick made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Go ahead and second, I was just giving him a chance.
Uh, Mark seconded, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to business services proposition 39, general obligation bond annual report.
So this is the second of the audits that we bring to the board, uh, for approval for the 21, 22 fiscal year, our general obligations bond audit report. I am happy to announce that it, we came back with no findings. Last year, the only thing was a recommendation to try to recruit and have our uh, citizens oversight committees and we have successfully been able to do so this last year. So no audit findings. So. Very excited for that.
Do I, does anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. Bro.
We have a motion made by Joel Pidor. Do I have a second?
I second it.
And seconded by Nick. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Um, next is the consolidated irrigation district, view purchase agreement.
Uh, yes, so back in October, the board approved a two-year agreements with, uh, the consolidated irrigation district along with the city of Selma and the Fresno County Rural Transit Authority. Always have to remember which order it goes in. Um, and CID's board requested revisions, uh, to the property insurance and indemnification sections. I did run it by legal and then, uh, legal's opinion through our property and liability group. Um, although their, um, their opinion is that what they're requesting isn't an unreasonable request. It is for the betterment of CID's liability purposes. Um, our liability company felt that, um, because they're using our facilities, we don't, uh, she didn't see a need for the, um, uh, dual indemnification. Um, so my recommendation is to, um, keep the current, uh, the fuel agreement that was originally um, approved by the board, uh, in place. Um, and, and not, uh, agree to the proposed revisions.
Does anybody have any questions?
I read it. And I don't remember it saying what exactly their, their want was. I know it didn't work to our advantage or to their advantage, but what was it?
The, um, the, the biggest thing was the, um, they wanted, there's currently no limit on the amount of liability. And they wanted a cap of five million. However, they're using our facilities, um, and, and then, and they're wanting indemnification on their part when it's actually, you know, again, our facility, our, they're using our facilities. So both of them, they're not unreasonable requests, but it really just, um, it, the other two companies, the other two entities have signed it without any issues. Um, I, I don't agree that we should make an adjustment for one, when the other two, um, have already been signed and all three were already approved, uh, by the board as is. So.
Does this cost extra for insurance?
Uh, no. It just, if something, you know, um.
I'm sure if it's done already with two others, it should be the same all the way across.
And that's my, that's my feeling too. Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
To approve?
To stay the way she wanted to do it? Yeah. Where, where we stay the course, the way it is. That's what we're approving, right?
No.
What are we approving?
Yeah, because my recommendation.
But we're going to, if you don't want it, if you don't, if you wanted to stay the way it is, you would say no, right? To the action, because we're not changing.
No, we're, I thought it was that we're agreeing with what she wants to do.
Correct. Okay.
Yes, the recommendation is to reject the proposed revisions.
Yeah. We're agreeing to reject.
Yeah. Okay.
There you go.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I, I have a, um,
motion.
A motion to approve, to reject.
I make a motion.
Change.
Okay, I make the motion, approve to reject, yep.
Yeah. And then I have a second by Estella. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Uh, three, Sierra school equipment proposal for ALMS cafeteria furniture?
Uh, yes, so we continue our, uh, move to, uh, update the cafeteria furniture and ALMS's proposal is here for you. Um, just as a sidebar, we are working on um, Indianola and Heartland, and then we just need a few, a few tables at Roosevelt and Eric White, and then that will complete all of the sites. For, for now, until the other two sites need to be replaced in the future.
Okay, do we have any questions?
Just how long of a process is that to get everybody up to party?
We, we intend to get, we have, um, our representative is going to be contacting the remaining schools. So we'll be done with um, ordering the tables this year.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve, uh, item three, Sierra school equipment.
Nick made an, uh, a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second one.
Joel, uh, made a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Um, consent agenda. Consent, uh, items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine or acted on by the Board of Trustees in one motion. There is no discussion of these items before the board vote unless a member. There is no discussion of these items before the board vote unless a member of the board, staff or public requests specific items be discussed and are removed from the consent agenda. It is understood that the administration recommends approval on all consent items. Each item on the consent agenda approved by the members of the governing board shall be deemed to have been considered in full and adopted as recommended. Before we approve it, can we just see, um, talk about the field trips? Do we know what field trips they're writing?
Yeah.
There's a chart.
Separate item.
Yeah.
Huh?
Field trips are a separate item. They're number six.
No, they're under consent.
They're in the consent. Okay.
So there's a chart there that shows.
Yeah, it's.
Go in there. Um, do we have a motion?
Can we pull, uh, number four A, please? Um, and pull it separate and then, uh, there needs to be an explanation. So just pull it.
Four A.
Four A, a donation.
I was gonna thank everybody for those.
Only that one.
Okay. Pulling four A from the consent agenda. And, um, okay, here's our, um, very good. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, yeah, I'll make the motion.
Mark, uh, made a, made a, um, motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Estella made, uh, has a, made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
So four A, Mrs. Kessler, would you like to speak to that, please?
Well, it was, um, uh, it was a combined donation from three people that I wrote the check, they interned. And I turned it in and I specifically wrote down, but it didn't come out that way. So I just wanted it to be very clear.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So you want to share who, who the funds came from?
Yeah, well, myself, uh, uh, Max's Cafe and, uh, Dr. Tushu.
Okay, thank you. So now we need to vote to approve that separately. So.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Four A.
I'll make a motion to approve four A.
Nick made a motion to approve a four A. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mark seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passed. Moving forward, uh, let's go to board report. Anybody have anything?
Oh, um, I do. Um, I went to, um, the Spelling Bee at Roosevelt School.
Oh, thank you for doing that.
I enjoyed myself. It was, um, I'm sorry. Can't hear me now?
It's much better. Start over, Mrs. Kessler.
I attended the Spelling Bee along with Mr. Dixon, um, and, um, had a really good time. It was, uh, nice to be back on my home turf there. It was very nice to see old friends and, uh, the kids did a marvelous job. I don't know how they can keep their cool under such stress. And, um, I also, um, um, I don't know if any of you know, but I have a, a granddaughter that plays, uh, varsity basketball. So I attend those basketball games though, um, and I will, now that we have a really great basketball boys team at high school, I'm gonna probably attend one of those at least because I hear they're really good. So that's what I've done, but I plan to do more next, next month. But I do have, if I can throw in a little bit of a concern on, uh, on the, on, on possible security at some of those games, sometimes you get a little, you know, we have fans that are a little rowdy, but, uh, so that just concerned me just a tad, a tad bit. And, and Dr. Shepherd was there watching the game with us and it was exciting game. Didn't you say you picked a good game to go to?
I did. Our girls won by two points and her granddaughter is a hoot to watch. So.
So anyways, that's my little two cents.
Anybody else?
I thought we were talking about the field trips.
Didn't you attend the ROP?
Yeah, I did. I'm sorry. Thank you for letting me that. Thanks, thanks, bro. Uh, yeah, no, I went to the, uh, ROP opening at, uh, Reedley High School, which happens to be my alma mater, was kind of cool at auto shop. It was amazing and it's where I met Fabrizio and I, I'm super excited. Talked to him for a while, was super excited to talk to him about the ROP program and what they are doing and what they want to do. And I'm really looking forward to be a part of that. So anyway, that's what I did.
Okay, nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, moving forward, um,
Superintendent.
Superintendent report.
Superintendent intended report.
So I'd like to thank Adam for your input tonight and I did follow up on getting you a microphone. It's ordered, but it's backordered. So just grab Mr. Medina's anytime. Okay, in the board letter, I mentioned February eighth is a special board meeting to have your two search companies come in and do a presentation. Um, is that gonna work? It's February eighth, like at six o'clock?
I won't be here.
You won't?
Okay, all right.
Changing.
All right, I'm gonna have to, um, go back to the drawing board. It's really tight getting these meeting. I mean, it took me, never mind, I'll do it. Okay, so we'll just have to bump it down and.
Like when?
Uh.
When do you leave?
Eight.
Oh, you're leaving on the eights?
And how long will you, are you gone?
Uh, I'll be back on twenty-six.
Uh, February?
Yeah.
Okay.
The whole mark.
So.
We can't put on a weekend on a Saturday?
Only if I, I can see if you're willing to do it. I.
I'm willing to do it on a Saturday.
I don't know. I, I just gotta make sure the consultants can come. That's, that's my challenge.
Yeah.
So you want me to check on a weekend?
Yeah, I do. I don't know about the rest.
Yeah, anytime.
All right, let me see. And you're leaving the eight, so, okay.
It depends on what Saturday.
Yeah, well, shoot, shoot.
So, yeah, some of you have signed up for training. So the only Saturday between, it's too short of a timeframe for me to do it this Saturday because they have to have lead times. So the February third, which is some people have signed up.
You think they could be here in an hour if you called?
It's short tonight.
Have a holiday.
I can see if I can. It's just whether they're available. I'll see what I can do to get eight, eight sooner than later. And I'm glad that, um, Mrs. Kessler mentioned the basketball, but I'm gonna tell you, if you want to see a great both, both the girls and the boys, but our boys' basketball team is really good. And we do have our rival and taking care of security on Wednesday night. There'll be two police officers there.
It's this Wednesday?
Yep. Seven o'clock. Um, and I just wanna acknowledge and thank the, um, Dr. Wildman's told me that they had a great LPAC input meeting and the Suda representatives were there and it had some great dialogue and input. So N C S E, okay, N C S E, I didn't know that, but it was a great meeting and the input was really valuable. And we had our district spelling bee that was really cool too. So, uh, that will be, um, was a lot of fun. So okay, I'll work on the dates and get back to you as soon as possible.
Okay, now we're, um, number twelve, uh, we're gonna go into closed session at eight thirty-nine. Thank you, everyone.